Stand up my microphone on. Calling the meeting to order at 6:00 PM. Becky, could you read attendance, please?
Stephanie Ma.
Here.
Becky Baisel, here. Mike Reese.
Here.
Jessica Dressley.
Here.
Misa Hadine.
Here.
Carrie Tate.
Here.
I'm here too, Becky.
Brian Davis. Yay!
So easily forgotten. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Thank you. With that, we'll move forward. And I need a motion to approve the agenda in the table file.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second. At this time, I would like to make a motion to... And tell me if I'm doing this right.
You're fine.
To amend tonight's agenda to add a topic of discussion surrounding the February 22nd incident involving two of our board members in the Hastings Middle School PTA Book Fair.
Do I have a second to the addition to the amendment?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 There goes all opposed. All right, motion passes. We'll add that to the agenda. Becky, let's put it right before... After legislative funding discussion, before policies. All right, with that...
We need to approve the agenda.
Yep, I know.
Oh.
With that amendment being made, I need a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of the agenda as it's amended? Say aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion passes. This microphone's gonna drive me crazy. It's fine. All right, we're gonna take a moment here, excuse me, to recognize all of our visitors. It is great to see so many faces out there and engaging yourselves in our public discourse. I appreciate it. All of those out there on TV, also great to have you tuning in as well, as well as Facebook and I'm sure any number of other places. So, that being said, let's move on with our agenda and get ourselves started with announcements and recognitions. Superintendent McDowell.
I'd like to start by bringing up members of our music department, as well as representatives from Schmidt Music, because they have an award to present tonight. I'm a marching band instructor, so I can talk really loud. Good evening, my name is Brent Turner. I'm the school services manager at Schmidt Music. I'm here today to celebrate the fine work that keeps happening in your music departments every day. I'd like to thank Hastings Middle School vocal music teacher Cheryl Borgan, Superintendent McDowell, and along with all of our friends from the Hastings Public Schools, from all of our... From all of your friends at Schmidt Music, including all four Schmitts currently active in our business, representing the fourth generation, our Tom and Doug Schmidt, and newly, our new CFO, CEO, and finance person, Pete and Ted Schmidt. We're excited to get into the fifth generation of that family. Sarah Nicholson, our Woodrow Berry Store Manager, and the person you've most likely seen in your schools every week, our school services representative, Jordan Swayantek. Unfortunately, Jordan has moved on to a new job, but a lot of us are coming into your schools and helping them build their music majors, music makers. At Schmidt Music, we celebrate our 125th anniversary on November 16th. We're in the music products industry, which includes instrument companies, publishers, retailers, and everyone else involved in helping you to be able to teach your students the fine art of music. Our music products industry has a trade association called the National Association of Music Merchants, or just NAM, which was established in 1901. NAM is the association that strengthens the $17 billion global music products industry. In 1988, NAM established their Best Communities for Music Education Award. Today, we are celebrating your 2021 Best Community for Music Education Award. This represents your second win in a row. Bravo, and thank you for keeping this tradition rolling. In 2021, the 23rd year of BCME, this program celebrates and recognizes innovative and resourceful music education programs in the United States and those schools and communities that support them. In order to apply for this award, Cheryl completed a 54-page survey, which reminds me, was not her, it was everybody. That's a master's level paper, by the way. And it pretty much covers every aspect of your music education programs. This survey was developed in partnership with the Music Research Institute at the University of Kansas. Survey questions are aligned with goals for equity and access to music education for all students, and with national standards for music education. In 2021, just 686 districts earned this prestigious national award. This places your music department in the top 5% of the 14,000 school districts in the nation. Bravo. Cheryl worked with Doug Schmidt, who's not here tonight. He's usually the one that presents his award. He's actually in COVID isolation today. To get your awards printed, framed, and delivered to everyone we could think of, who was instrumental, pun intended, in making... He wrote this speech for me, by the way. In making your music department so excellent. If for any reason we may have missed someone or made a spelling mistake, please contact Cheryl, and we will make that change for you. This happens sometimes, because when we're putting things together, we don't always know the spelling of your names. So before I go, NAM loves to get pictures of people who win their awards, so please raise yours up when you get it, and shout hip hip hooray for the Hastings Music Department, which lots of excellence here. You have a state marching band championship band that has been doing this for a long time and has won many times there, too. Cheers. Keep up your great work, and thanks for your ongoing support of Schmidt Music. Thank you. Mike Johnson.
Dwayne and Kelly and Lisa.
We'd like to be heavy in the picture.
Yep. And Steve. And Matt and Esther V. And Paul.
Are you over here?
Yes.
Have you heard them sing yet, though?
No.
We're getting some barb.
Everybody smile. With your eyes.
What was the hip hop parade? I think now. Okay. Three, two, one.
Thank you, music department, for your continued excellence. It's really a privilege to be part of community. It's got such an outstanding music program. What else you got, Bob?
Minnesota School Board Association picks a week in the course of a school year to appreciate school board members, and the week of February 21st through 25th, which we are in, all those awesome days with the 2-2-2-2 in them, or 2-2-1-2-2 in them, is this year's School Board Appreciation Week. And so, it's a week where the Minnesota School Board Association wants to recognize school board members for leadership in public education and being willing to do the job and the time that it takes to represent communities across the state. And so with that, we have certificates for each of our school board members. And we're gonna repeat the process. We have Carrie Gore here, and we need to... What we have... One thing we haven't done is the school board has gotten a group picture. And so, since we have everyone here, we would like Carrie to tape a group picture of the whole school board. As everyone knows, we only have the whole group here twice a month. So if what we could do... Carrie, where would you like people?
There's a quite long hallway.
Are you okay going in the hallway quick, or do you wanna go in here somewhere? Maybe we should just go right here. Let's go right here. All right. Okay, gang, let's do this quickly. Well, we're getting re-seated. I'll just bring up one more thing. Today, a few of our school board members were able to make it, but it was Bus Driver Appreciation Day and AIDS Day. And we... A bunch of us were able to go up this morning or during lunch. While I was there, the mayor was there, and read a proclamation, making today Minnesota Bus Appreciation Driver and Drivers Aid Day in Hastings. So it was a pretty big deal. It was fun. They had donuts, and they had chili hot dogs for lunch and things like that. So thank you for board members that were able to make that and show your appreciation to our bus drivers.
What was the healthy alternative?
Water.
If you went to Big River, if you went up to Big River, there were Snickers and Milky Way.
Perfect. That's far more healthy. I like that. That's awesome. All right, I was remiss in getting approval for the minutes from February 2nd, 2022, so I need to roll back, I apologize, and get approval. I get a motion for approval of those minutes from February 2nd. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion on the minutes from February 2nd, 2022? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. We'll move back down. Two items for discussion. Our first one is a legislative funding discussion.
I can intro while you're passing them out.
Okay.
So this has been something I... This has been something that has been on the board's three-year work plan, is to figure out how to get a legislative, whether it's gonna be an ad hoc legislative team together, or something to be a part of the work that happens at the legislature. And so, this has been something that Lisa's been working on as part of that. And so, the discussion tonight Lisa will intro is that, while it's a part of our three-year work plan, the idea of what might the board put forward as a support of legislative action in support of our schools.
All right, thanks, Bob. Yeah, so we started talking last year about having a Legislative Action Committee. And honestly, quite a big part of it was MSBA started doing legislative updates via Zoom, and it became really easy to engage and get weekly both updates and calls for advocacy. But because we, as a board, do not speak as individuals unless we speak at the board table, we didn't have a way to engage in that advocacy. So this is a year to kind of investigate who's doing what, and what that looks like. And that's great, except this is also a year where there's been a lot of calls for advocacy, and the legislature is actually moving relatively quickly. Bills are coming forward relatively quickly. And groups that compile legislative platforms that support schools, Minnesota School Board Association, C, the Superintendents Association, have worked together this year to align their platforms. And so, what I wanted to do today was less to talk about the structure of the committee, because we're really targeting that for next year, and we'll do some investigation through the summer, but to talk about if we, as a board, are willing to speak to the advocacy issues that are at hand. And the two big calls that are in place, and what you see in front of you is just our governance schedule, where we talk about getting this thing going and thinking about structure. And the second page is just straight out of the MSBA legislative platform. And everybody's seen this. I know it's been sent out to people over the past year... Not past year, over the past couple of months. And obviously, we're aligned to Minnesota School Board Association. And then, the third page is an example of... MSBA does a weekly advocate. They do a weekly legislative update, and then they do an online weekly advocate, where they talk about, here's issues really specific to education in Minnesota, where the voice of local school boards could be valuable. And the call at hand, the most recent one, is an advocacy ask. Governor Walz released a supplemental budget with a recommendation of $788 million increase in early education through grade 12 funding. Then there's other calls beyond that one, but the current legislative ask is if local districts would send a letter to their legislative representatives, which in our case would be both at the House and... Well, in everybody's case, we'd be both at the State House and the State Senate, asking that our representatives support that $788 million increase and nothing less. And call for that as a base commitment to education. And that's the most recent call that MSBA has made. And because we're at a place where the legislature is only in session for a couple of months, maybe, we need to move swiftly if we're gonna support that. So that's a specific ask. A draft letter has been prepared by MSBA that we could use. A more general potential advocacy piece would be a letter from the Hastings School Board, supporting the MSBA legislative platform, again, going to our State and House representatives. And just recognizing that these calls, full funding for special education, full funding for special education obligations, English learner requirements, equalization of property tax levies, and the list goes down, that we support all of those. And so I just wanted us to start with a board table conversation and see if we're at a place where we could make that base level of commitment, and what our timeline could be to do that, knowing that we have to line up with our legislative schedule.
This is fantastic, Lisa. Thank you so much for putting this together. And it's something that I've started to get interested in over the last two years, and going along the same lines as what you had said, too. MSBA makes it really easy to follow along with what's going on in education, in particular in Minnesota. I think it is a critical time to... Well, it's always a critical time to advocate for our students and our district, and our community as a whole, because it does impact everybody. So I really like this. I think it's something that we should move forward with, but I would not feel comfortable doing it unless it is unanimous.
Thank you, Stephanie. I just opened a letter that was linked to MSBA, and I'd be happy to read it out loud or we can find it online. But it's... This was dated February 10th, which was when the call went out for action, but obviously it could date a change. Dear elected officials, thank you for your support of the students, families, and staff of public schools across Minnesota. Governor Walz released his supplemental budget recommendation with a $788 million proposed increase in early education through grade 12 funding for next school year. His recommendations would also increase funding by 1.7 for the following two school years. With the state's projected budget surplus of $7.75 billion, please support a spending target of at least the governor's target. Although the session just started, it says just started this week. We did say something like recently started, we understand the timeline for passing bills is shorter this year. Supplemental budget bills will be assembled in late March or early April, and that is why we want to emphasize the need for a target big enough to allow us to meet the needs of all of our students. We urge you to prioritize public education funding this session by providing a target large enough to fully fund special education and English learner cross subsidies. Thank you for your advocacy on behalf of our schools, and please feel free to contact us if you have any questions. And then it's respectfully signed by the school board. So it targets the two highest priority planks from MSBA.
Thank you, Lisa. Thank you for reading that. It does provide clarification as to what, you know, we would be looking at signing, but again, it would have to be... Everybody has to be on board. We are one team. I've said it before, and I'll continue saying it again. We are one team, one voice, and if we're gonna sign it as a school board, it really needs to be unanimous, and this is something that I would support.
I would support it... Oops, sorry. I would support it, too. I think it's exciting, something new for all of us. I think it's... Like I said, we have never done this, and I think it's an opportunity for us to get our voices out there and speak to legislation. And it's something that I really support you leading us on, Lisa.
Yeah, I think it's important, because what is it, 4.2 million a year?
We have four... Well, it's over 4.2 million in special ed cross subsidy, and another 200, just under 260,000 in EL cross subsidy that we have right now.
So four and a half, yeah. I think it'd also be beneficial if you had maybe a template or something that you could send the constituents' parents, families to back up what we're also saying. So send ours. Send, you know, do that, but also have others reply to the legislators as well, and to get more input from others.
Yeah, I think... Thanks, Mike. I think that could be something potentially, if there was support for the statement, and we sent a letter, that could be potentially included in a raider update, that said, you know, this is an issue at hand, and the school board is making a statement in favor of it, and this is the scope of the impact to Hastings District.
If it's something that the board wants to move forward with, you could... If as a group, you're willing to entertain the piece that Lisa read, then you could move this as an action item for later, then do that tonight, if that's what you wanted to move on.
In order to move it to an action item, we have to make sure that we vote on that. And based on Stephanie's comment earlier, I don't even want to move it to an action item if we can't get a unanimous vote to move it to an action item, because then we'd get into a whole nother kerfuffle at that point. I think it's something that we should be supporting, but it's, of course, up to each individual. So with that, I would need a motion to move this to an action item, and a second, and then we can vote on that and see where we're at.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, sorry. Anyone opposed? All right. Motion passes to move to an action item. Great. Thank you, Lisa. Appreciate that effort.
Yeah, thank you. And then as we go throughout the year, we'll kind of bring forward the piece that's more looking at the actual committee and what that will look like potentially in the future, and how other districts engage in that work.
Okay. All right. I'm gonna move us forward to the agenda item that was added, which is the PTA Book Fair incident. I am going to kind of tee it up a little bit here, and then I'm gonna open up the discussion. One of the things I want to make clear is that I want to ensure that everybody has an opportunity to speak, and speak on the perspective, in terms of this whole thing, in terms of our board members, everybody get an opportunity to speak. I also, though, don't want to have this get dragged out either. So I will be watching time and making sure that we don't get into just minutia or keep repeating the same thing over and over. For the audience out there, and for those of you on TV, one of the things we're trying to do here is clear the air and get ourselves to a point where we continue to move forward as a cohesive body. I am gonna say this, and I'll probably say it a million times after this. The one thing I'm trying to get away from, and it's gonna take a little time, but I'm trying to get away from, is this being an option to Chicago Wednesdays on NBC. I mean, we've gotta get to a point where this isn't the melodrama that everybody wants to see over anything that's on television. I'll save the drama for Hollywood, and we're gonna try to get down to business and get things done. That being said, let me tee it up. So, I've written this just so it's a little bit clearer. So what happened is on February 18th, Director Tate did send an email to the school board regarding her concerns about two books being sold at the Hastings Middle School Book Fair, run by the Hastings Middle School PTA. The books Carrie disagreed with being sold at the Middle School Scholastic Book Fair are dear justice, and they both die at the end. She did state in her email that her concerns about the mature content in these books was the justification for trying to protect the district from a lawsuit. I did direct Carrie to work with her concern out with the PTA, as the fundraiser is not a board function. So we'd go through the PTA, go through the chair of the PTA, that type of thing. On February 22nd, Director Tate and Director Dressley did volunteer in their role as PTA members at the book fair. During their time volunteering, they were seen taking out books that they deemed controversial without approval of the PTA. By the way, I want to let you know, I did have subsequent conversations with both Director Tate and Director Dressley, and they did indicate that part of the reasoning, and they will get to speak for themselves, but I want to let you know that we talked, had to do with the grade level that was indicated, and also the mature content warning that was on the books. I want to throw that out there to make sure it's out there in the public. So... Just had to get back to my spot, I'm sorry. No one on the board, including myself or Dr. McDowell, authorized any of these taking from the books. I do not know that the chair of the PTA authorized it either. But Director Tate, an email response to the community members, did indicate that she and Director Dressley's actions were a way to protect the district. Mitigating the severity of their actions, she did say they talked to the librarian, who said they did do the same thing. However, HMS does not have a librarian. It was later clarified, I believe by Carrie, that I think what she meant was she was talking about the process that had been previously followed by previous chairpeople of the PTA. Furthermore, they did state that they were acting in their capacity as volunteer parents. However, it has been told to all board members, the public does not recognize, nor do they care if we are volunteers in certain capacities. We are always board members in this community and need to act accordingly. In this instance, the evidence is insurmountable in that the perception is that the two board members took it upon themselves to remove books from a book fair. And I don't mean the two board members in an admonishment way. I mean, people saw it as two board members and not two PTA volunteers, without authority based on the premise that they created, that were created by themselves. I did mention to Carrie and Jessica at the beginning of their term that they should cease their membership in other committees outside those assigned as a board member, in particular the curriculum committee, because of the role as a board member. The consequence of potential intimidation, intentional or not, and the perceptions and expectations the public has in our elected positions requires us to try to do that. I do understand that Carrie and Jessica stepped down from the curriculum committee, but not the PTA, and I understand the passion that goes along with that as a parent, so I want to say that. I want to be very clear about that. So the fallout of these actions, whether they're intentional or not, and I don't believe they're intentional, but the fallout of these actions is really not relevant in the sense that the perception of overstepping your role as an elected official at this table further divides our community and instills greater distrust in the board, because regardless of what capacity we think we're operating under, we, as board members, are representatives of this district. Let me be crystal clear about this. These actions are not that of the school board, or are not endorsed by the school board. I want to make sure that everybody is clear on that. These were not actions of the school board. These were actions that were outside of the school board's purview, because PTA is its own nonprofit. We did not oversee them. So I wanted to be clear that that is my statement that I laid out here today, and now I will open the floor for comments. By the way, I want to make sure nobody talks over each other, so I'll acknowledge you when you're ready to speak. I'm gonna open up the floor if Carrie would like to speak first? Okay, I'll open up the floor for Carrie and let her start. Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you. One correction on the statement that Brian made. I had stated that I thought the librarian had advised that historically in book fairs, they had put books aside... historically in book fairs, they had put books aside that were deemed inappropriate. I understood her to be the librarian, and I now know that she was the secretary working in the library for the day. That was just my mistake as to who she was exactly. But I just want to state, both Jessica and I are middle school PTA members and signed up to work the book fair, obviously. Last week, when I was reviewing the flyer, I noticed that there were two books that were flagged with a mature content warning. And I looked at Scholastic's website to see that the two books were appropriate for, were listed as being appropriate for ninth through 12th grade. As the book fair is occurring at the middle school, which is only fifth through eighth grade, I chatted with some parents to see if they had any knowledge of these books, because I didn't have any knowledge of these books, including a teacher. And she had confirmed back to me that these were, in fact, books that would not be appropriate for middle schoolers. So with that, I alerted the PTA president that we should not be selling these items, at least directly to the kids. As I asked questions about the process, I learned that there is currently no district oversight when outside organizations sell products at the schools, and none of the books had been reviewed or vetted in any manner. Because of that, I requested, as Brian mentioned, I requested that perhaps we should have some sort of oversight about, over organizations that sell products out of our schools. I was advised that the PTA just needed to work through it. So, and then yesterday, when I showed up for my shift at the book fair, the PTA president had advised me that the two books that I had identified, along with a third one that she had identified, were in the box next to the register and would only be available for parents if they came to buy the books themselves. So we agreed that the PTA needs to determine how to handle these situations in the future, because there isn't currently a process. She advised that, even though she reached out to the Scholastic book sales rep asking the question if there were any additional books that fell into this potentially inappropriate, age inappropriate, mature warnings on them, she asked if there were any other books that fell into that category, and the Scholastic book sales rep came or didn't respond. So she advised that she was unsure if there were any other books like the three that had been placed in the box for parental purchase only. So while Jessica and I were working at the book fair, I had a two-hour shift and I checked out one kid, so I had lots of, lots of time. So I decided to take a look at the books that are marked in the young adult section and looked at Scholastic's website to check. So in all, we found an additional five books that fell in the same category. The category being that the appropriate age listed on the Scholastic website was grades nine through 12, and they also had a mature content warning on them. So when Brenda, when Brenda, the, sorry, the PTA president arrived back for her next shift, I immediately told her that we looked through the young adult section and found these additional five books that we placed into the box. The previous book chair, the previous book fair chair was in the library, as I stated, and she said that she has always done the same thing in previous book fairs. She's looked at the books to review and make sure that they are appropriate, age appropriate, without these, without these warnings. Some of the books have, still, still out there have the warnings, but they're appropriate for seventh through 12th. So those are, those are on the shelves. And she said that they have also, she had also vetted the books prior to them arriving to make sure that we didn't order any books that were inappropriate. So these steps hadn't been done. So basically, this was nothing intentional. I thought that I was doing what Brenda had basically advised needed to be done, in that she said she had not gotten confirmation from the Scholastic book rep that we didn't know if there was any more books that should be sold directly to parents or not. So I honestly thought that I was helping Brenda. I know she, I understand she took the entire week off of work to work the book fair, because we didn't have enough volunteers, frankly. So in hindsight, perhaps we should have, instead of actually pulling them like she had, making a list, you know, made a list and just handed it to her when she returned. But I basically, I look at it this way. So some parents may be perfectly comfortable with their middle schoolers watching R-rated movies in school, but many are not okay with that, and therefore it would be inappropriate for us to show an R-rated movie in a middle school classroom. So that's, that's kind of how I think through this. So while some parents may be okay with their kids reading mature content that's above their grade level, a lot of parents are not. And so I thought the PTA president's approach was appropriate and that we would have these books set aside to sell directly to parents, rather than having them out for the kids to buy during the school day.
Jessica? Looks like you're agreeing with Bishop. Okay.
So I'm not going to repeat all the stuff that Carrie has already said, but what I will add to that is that we've been members of the PTA and were signed up for this book fair long in advance of any of this coming about. The books in question have a mature content warning on the EZ scan machine. That actually is an indication that they need parental approval for the student to buy it anyways, per Scholastic. That's not per my requirement. That's per Scholastic's requirement. So that's what I would like to add. And we were not saying that the books couldn't be available. Obviously, that's not our place. We weren't acting as board members. We were acting as concerned parents. And we were saying that parental oversight needs to happen with these books, because they are not for the group of fifth to eighth grade.
Anybody else have any comments to provide?
I do, and I'll make this very brief.
Okay.
Do you represent all the parents in making that decision?
I would say that we do represent some parents, because we represent-
Do you represent me as a parent of a middle schooler?
I'm not saying that we represent every, everyone, but I do say that we would represent, I mean, I think that there is a fair number of parents who would not appreciate their, their middle schooler being able to buy a book that is flagged as mature content appropriate for high schoolers.
And I can appreciate that. Thank you. We have heard over and over again about parental choice and allowing parents to make that choice based off of what they feel is appropriate for their children. I feel like you violated that right of mine. And I just, I'm upset because you did not have the purview to do that. And I appreciate that you probably had good intent, but the perception is that you are a board member, and we've said it over and over again. You're in the grocery store, you're a board member. You're at a PTA meeting, you're a board member. It is very difficult, if not impossible, to take off that hat. So you have to be careful about what you do, when you do it, what you say, and to whom. This has been some, I mean, Carrie, you, you walked during your campaign with these books. This is something that has been on our radar since the very beginning. How is this not one step to, to an agenda to book ban? I mean, and I really, I really hope this is an isolated incident, that this was a lapse in judgment. But we need to work together, and Carrie, we sat down and we talked about this. We need to come together as a team, because the people that suffer are the students. Just going to leave it at, we have a policy. We have a process. You were told to go to the PTA president or chairperson. I'm just very disappointed.
But I'd like to clarify, I did speak to the president of the PTA. And we spoke when I, we spoke at length, actually, when I arrived for my shift. And she was the one, she, she chose to pull the books that were flagged with mature content appropriate for high school and put them in a box so that they were not out on the rack. So that, that was her choice. That was her method to control this. So I, I, I under, it was my understanding, since she did not hear back from the Scholastic rep, that there was a need to identify the other books that belonged in that box that had those same flags on them. This has nothing to do with content, with morals, with values, with any of that. It has to do with what Scholastic had flagged in their system as mature high school materials. So, and I want to be sure, because you said I took away your, your rights as a parent, but we didn't take away parent rights. Parents were still allowed to purchase those books. Absolutely. That was available for the parents who choose to buy those for their kids, who think that they, they should have those books. They could also buy them online. That's another option with the book fair. So, so these books were not like taken and hidden somewhere so that nobody could buy them. They were put aside in a box that was, that was set aside for parental permission. And as Jessica said, on, on the Scholastic sheet with, when you're scanning them, every time you get a mature warning that pops up on the screen, per Scholastic, they say that that child or whoever is buying that is supposed to have parental permission to buy that book. So my concern is, and here's the, the way that we went through the books, I grabbed a handful of books and I'd go through and scan them just to see which ones had the warnings. So then I would have to figure out, okay, which ones, which ones are appropriate for high school. So I will say, there, there is a large amount of books in the book fair right now that still have that mature content warning on them. We didn't remove the ones that on the Scholastic website said that they were okay for seventh and up and eighth and up, because of course we have seventh and eighth graders here. So I just want to make, we were not denying parents the ability to buy them. We were, we put them in the box to prevent fifth through eighth graders from buying high school mature content warned books.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And I was aware of two, not the additional five.
Right.
Silence out there, please. I'll clear this entire room if I have to.
You do, just a point of clarification, you understand the perception and the position this puts us in.
I do, and I apologize for that perception that is absolute, this was not an intentional, we're going to get rid of books. The, the, like I said, the only reason that, that two books had been identified previously was because those two books were included in the flyer that they sent with, for the book fair. The other five books that we found were not in the flyer. So we didn't know that those, and I had talked to the PTA president about this. She said that she, you don't know all of the books that you're getting. You get a flyer with a limited number of books listed. And then whatever else comes, comes. So that was, that was the question for the Scholastic book rep. Beyond the flyer with the two that had the mature content warning next to them, what else do we have that, that is perhaps inappropriate for this age group? And unfortunately, they didn't respond, because if they had, my understanding is that those five books would have already been in that box. And that would have been the, I mean, that would have, that would have been wonderful, frankly, because we wouldn't be having this conversation, right? Because that was the PTA president's decision. That was how she was going to handle it. Put it in the box for parental, to sell to, only to parents. I wish the Scholastic rep had responded. I really do. I truly, I thought that we were being helpful by, by filling in for that, for that missing information.
Okay. Becky?
I'll be short. I just, we've been under, this school board has been under so much scrutiny for the last, how many years, and I want to build trust in this community. The trust was broken again. I just want to point out that we do have a school board handbook. We do have responsibilities. So when you are out in the public, you are a school member, no matter if you're a parent, you're a parent, you're a volunteer, anything. So I think this is time to look at, maybe stop volunteering. I know it's something that you guys like to do, but that's, you have to look at the, the board book and look, you know, when boards focus on administrative issues, school districts suffer. Divided boards lead to a divided community. Well, that's what we're at right now, correct? And then spending time on board governance rather than staff work focuses on the end, not the means. Take full responsibility for its activity and behavior at and away from the board table. I mean, there's so many things that we've given. And like I said, we've been scrutinized for years, because we're not doing our job, we're not following the rules. Well, we have these rules for a reason. So I think it's time to step back. Trying to do good, I appreciate that, but I think it's time that we, seven of us, we have to be a team. This community has to stop being divided. We have to work together for the school district and these children. I may want the books in there, you may not want to, but together we have to work together. You can't go rogue. I can't go rogue. We can't keep fighting. We have to work together for this school district. This school district has been around since, what is it saying here? We have to continue to focus on that and continue to make this school district where people want to go. We're in the news again. We're on the, all over social media. People are trying to move into this community with low or decreased enrollment. Who wants to bring their children to the school district? We are disgraced right this second. And I think we can all, all seven of us can work better together and stop, stop all this, stop maddening.
Does anybody else have any comments before close? Yes, Mike, go ahead.
I'm just completely against censorship of any kind. Regardless, whether I agree with it or not, I don't think anything should be censored. So I wanted to state that.
I've not heard from Lisa. Lisa, have anything?
No, the only thing, well, no, and then the only thing. The only thing that I have to say is that it is, it is critical to recognize the competence of, of our staff. And we have staff in the district that can give us feedback on things like which books should be where. And in this case, if, from the PTA's perspective, I would presume that Scholastic knows the content of the books, and they know what age group they're sending them to, and that that, that they, that they recognize that. And it's just that constant recognition and awareness of the fact that very knowledgeable people are doing the daily work of the district and to support our committees.
I just want to say that, that, yes, I was, I was actually hopeful when I had sent my email last week, asking if we could have some sort of oversight or vetting process with the books. I was hoping that there would be help from the district, but we were informed that the PTA had to figure it out. And unfortunately, this, this was, this realization that there may be inappropriate books in here was, was, there was short notice, basically. There wasn't much time to figure, figure all of this out, especially, I mean, if you look at the book fair, there's a lot of books over there. A lot of them are awesome books. But basically, that, that part of it came down to timing. And I guess based on the previous book fair chair's comments, she had advised that this, this does happen. We receive books from Scholastic that do include inappropriate content for the age group. And I guess that would be, I mean, that's, that's obviously a conversation that needs to happen with the, the book fair chair and Scholastic as far as why are we receiving these books? I mean, she specifically said drugs, alcohol, sexual assault. Those are the three that I remember her, her mentioning. So, so I, so again, it kind of comes back to the, the PTA didn't have a process to make sure that the books were vetted, and, and they will going forward. It's absolutely everyone, and this is in agreement, that the PTA needs to have a meeting and discuss how they're going to go forward with their book fairs in the future to make sure that, obviously, something like this never happens again.
Okay, so I'm going to close the loop, because I'm going to try to be, keep us somewhat on time. The, some of the things that a little bothersome to me are, I always, Stephanie will say that I do this to a fault, but that's okay. I really try to look for the best intent of everybody that's trying to do everything the best they can for this district. I will say this, there's a few tricky pieces in there that the PTA and Scholastic are going to have to work on on their end. Amongst those is this, a lot of our children are reading at high school levels when they're fifth graders. Then what do you do? You know, those types of things where they're reading at ninth, 10th grade levels as fifth graders. Well, these middle schoolers now would like to have, some parents would like to have the resource to be able to have them access those books, others not. It's something, though, for the PTA and Scholastic to figure out and work out. The school board has no part in that. Currently, they have no part in that, and that's where we stand right now. And kind of to Mike's point, I want to be clear about this as I close this loop. The school district does not stand for censorship of any type. loop. The school district does not stand for censorship of any type. We don't. We won't. And as long as I'm sitting in this chair, I always advocate for us never to censor anything. There's some things we agree with, there's some things we don't. I, I sent out a note earlier to the board today. We are not going to agree on everything. But what we're going to work really hard on is civil discourse, getting ourselves to a point where we can work as a cohesive unit, because it's very important to do that. I am going to work very, very hard at that. I'm committed to it, because we will get ourselves away from these made for TV events. We're going to get away from them one way or the other. And we're going to work hard at that. I appreciate everybody's input on this, and I am now going to close the loop and move to the next item. Actually, before that, what I'm going to do is I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. I want everybody to bring their temperatures down. I want their heart rates to drop back down, so we can move on to the rest of this agenda, which I promise you is a lot more boring, in case you're planning on hanging out for it. So I need a motion to take a five-minute.
So moved.
I need a second?
Second.
All right, five minutes. Sorry, we're back at six fifty-six. Good call. A meeting back to order, please, here at six fifty-six. We are now moving into our policy section of the meeting with our first readings. First reading is policy two thirteen, which is school board committees. Bob?
So we put school board committees back on here because there was a change to school board committees, in that we no longer have a facilities committee. And so, as Becky pulls that up, you'll see that that is the change reflected in there, a little bit farther, right there. So the, the piece that's in there is that you will see that rather than listing committees straight out, that the policy committee decided that it would make more sense to leave it more vague, and it's stated there in green. So appointing, it's going to appoint standing committees at the school board organizational meeting held in January. The reason for this is, just like the facility committee no longer exists, if the board, as a board, decides throughout the course of the year that that committee is no longer going to happen, then we don't run into a policy that states that it's there and someone says, wait a minute, that policy says you're supposed to have the X committee, and you don't have it. And this allows for the board to make those adjustments.
This is obviously a first reading, so it's nothing to be brought on tonight, but does anybody have any questions?
I just have one comment.
Sure.
With the removal of the list of committees, section two B should then be removed. It states, "The school board has determined that certain permanent standing committees, as described in this policy, do facilitate the operation of the school board in the school district." So with those no longer being defined, that would have to be removed.
Thank you for pointing that out. So I think what we can probably do, and we'll bring it back, so I believe we have policy on what, March first, we can bring it back and maybe just work some of the verbiage, so that it says, you know, maybe it's a reference to the attachment that lays out all of the committee appointments. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Anything else on school board committees piece? Seeing nothing, I'll move on to school board calendars for two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-three, twenty-four.
All right. For that, we will bring up Kathy Moon and Rachel Larson, who have been heading up our calendar committee.
All right, ladies, please remember to use the mic, so that everybody can hear you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Testing. Becky, could we please see the PowerPoint? Thank you. Good evening, members of the board. We had a phenomenal process with our calendar committee this year, and we want to send a sincere thank you to everybody who donated their time. Calendar committee isn't always the most fun committee to be on, but it is a very important committee, because the way we schedule the days for our learners makes an impact on their learning experience. And so a shout out to all the people who served on the committee. As we think about the calendar, we have had two processes for calendar approvals in the past. One, we look at the next year's calendar for final approval, but we also bring forth a draft calendar for approval for the following subsequent school year. So the first calendar that we'll talk about is for final approval, that will be brought back to you at the next board meeting. And this is for the actual two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three school calendar. So some of the things that guide the calendar are the contractual items related to what the specific counts are. So how many teacher workdays we have, student contact days, workshop, development, and those pieces. And those are contractual. But when we think about the calendar, we start with the priorities of what works best for students and how does this timing work with staff needs and with family needs. So one of the important things within the calendar is that delayed start for our kindergarten kiddos. That is a very important part of that initial experience for them, coming to school on that first, second day. Another strong consideration is conferences, and the timing of conferences is really important for us, so that we make sure we can have the conversations with parents after getting to know the students really well. And then again, later winter, early spring, to make sure we can do a check-in with parents as to where students are progressing. Then graduation is always really important within the school year and how it relates to not only the days of the year and the counts and the hours we need to have students present, but also just that last week of school and making sure the students get to celebrate and have graduation on that last Friday. So that's the overall flow of the calendar, and we'll share the calendars with you on the screen in a little bit. So you have in your packet the, the final approval that we'll ask at the next board meeting for the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three calendar. But as part of practice, we also bring a draft calendar for you, which we will ask for approval of the draft calendar for two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four. And we follow the same contractual language and the same priorities. And so you'll see that in that calendar, a lot of the flow is the same, making sure that we prioritize those needs for students and that the days make sense. So for example, some of the things we take into account is a four-day week, right? What impact does that have on learners and families and staff? And how does that impact conferences or PD days? So we don't just look at things singularly, but holistically. So with that, um, tonight you have the first readings of the calendars, and the twenty-third is the discussion item. Then March third, we'll have a potential calendar committee meeting pending your feedback, if you have anything that you'd like us to consider. And then we'll be coming to you to ask for final approval for the calendars on March twenty-third. So Becky, if you could just put up the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three calendar, the public would like to see that. Thank you. So at this point, do you have any questions for us?
I just have one question on actually the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four calendar. When I was looking at it, I noticed that the, the first staff development day in the school year has been moved up, so that the first two weeks of the school year are short, where usually that, that staff development day falls at the end of September. I was just wondering about the rationale behind moving that up.
Are you talking specifically the September fifteenth?
Correct.
Two thousand twenty-three, as compared to the two thousand twenty-two and the twenty-sixth?
Right. Yep. And this year, I believe it was also later September.
Excuse me. The placement of those PD days are within Rosh Hashanah. So in trying to respect all the different groups of families in our community, we placed it at the twenty-eighth and the twenty-two, twenty-three, that following year, that date is earlier in the year. So we moved that staff development to still coincide with that.
Okay, thank you.
So you will see that change from future years to recognize that.
Anything else on the calendars? Okay, well, it's fascinating stuff, but you guys only got one question, so that's it. You're off the hook.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. All right, we're going to move on, keep this thing moving, because to Carrie's point, it's kind of a long agenda. So Carrie, you're right about that. We're going to move on to administrative reports. Superintendent?
All right, thank you. So, hang on a second. All right. So this is time for the superintendent update. And as we did in November, the superintendent update this month is an update on our strategic planning and where we are in that process. So I wanted to start with a timeline that backs us all the way up to September of two thousand twenty, and the reason for that is we have a different school board total membership than we did, than we did at that time. So when I first came on board in two thousand twenty, there were discussions in that fall about how do we put together a strategic plan. It was one of the goals of the school board. And so we began working on that, as you can see, in April of twenty-one. And then by June of twenty-one, the school board was ready to talk mission, vision, and what has become the core values in that piece. As we moved to July, those, those, along with the three-year work plan that you've seen once tonight, have already, were approved. And then this last summer, July through August, our administrative team really put together the first set of action plans based on the strategic plan and the operational plan. What happened then is the school board, as part of their work in the fall, was organizing and coming to some agreement on what the superintendent evaluation would look like, which included a goal around strategic planning. And that's what led to us in November, doing the first board update as per that superintendent evaluation timeline. And now tonight in February, which is the second required board update as part of that superintendent evaluation timeline. All of the strategic plan, just to re-center us, is based on these desired daily experiences that came out of that process from strategic planning. So what is it that our students desire? What is it that our, whoop, what our families desire? What is it that our staff desire as part of the daily experiences? And that's what we ground everything back to. The question then at the board table becomes, how does everything fit together? And as we've learned in our work with teamwork, this idea and balance between government, governance and management. And on the governance side, as I've talked through that very first slide, really the, the board works on the strategic roadmap. That's that one pager that says, here's our mission, here's our vision, here's our core values. And then a three-year work plan, which is what was being worked off of earlier in one of your discussion items. And then this long-range district model, which we're going to work on in May, it's kind of gotten pushed out, but it makes more sense after we get our surveys back and things like that, to put that long-range district model that comes into place. And then finally, it's that superintendent evaluation. On the management side, we have all of the parts that come together in order for us to get the strategic plan operationalized. So each of our, our district has a district division card, which we're going to talk at the end of this about. We have an operational plan that lays out how everything fits together. All of our departments do executive summaries. Our elementary, middle, and high schools all put together what are called action cards. And those action cards, as we move forward, are going to become building improvement plans. And so you'll see some of this terminology change a little bit as we move along, because as we are into the first year, back to that timeline, we're just getting going in the first twelve months of this, as it, as it gets laid out. But what you're receiving now is the very bottom of that, these monitoring reports, which feed into the superintendent evaluation. So once again, we've got our strategic roadmap or our strategic plan. We've got a three-year governance work plan, which talks to what does the board work on big picture items over the course of three years. While this doesn't have to be set in stone, these were the things that the board at the time put into place and said, here's what our, here's what our three-year projection seems to be, based on what we know now. And you'll see in the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two column, as you look through that, as a board, we've done almost everything in that column. And so the, the plan is coming together, right? And it'll just become more refined, will be more productive as we move along, and, and create more and more definition of those specific pieces in two thousand twenty-two and two thousand twenty-three. So here's how we conceptualize this on the management side. We take that roadmap on the left, we turn it into an operational plan, we have our departments do We have our departments do those executive summaries. Our buildings do the action cards. And we are working towards finalizing this district vision card, the accountability piece, how do we know how we're doing? And so the internal components, first is the operational plan. It's made up of three strategic anchors: Engage learners, Effective Operations, Communication, and Collaboration. Those live at the bottom right of our strategic plan. They're our strategic anchors. On the right-hand side is our operational plan. So those three things, as you can see on the right, Engage learners, Effective Operations, Communication, and Collaboration, then get subdivided into very specific things, such as we're going to focus on mental health, we're going to focus on literacy, we're going to focus on cultural responsive classroom and curriculum, student engagement, access to effective instruction, aligned continuum of services, or multi-tier systems of support. All of that, on the right-hand side, is what is happening administratively behind the scenes. Those are the medium-sized rocks. So if you think about it in terms of the strategic anchors are the really big rocks. The medium-sized rocks are in this operational plan. The next step are these executive summaries. These are just directors. So the directors of every department puts together for me twice a year, what has happened the past 12 months? What have we accomplished in that department? What's going to happen in the next 90 days? And what do we anticipate in the next 12 to 15 months? All of those executive summaries, and obviously there's too much for people to read in this, but the board has gotten copies of these. All of these executive summaries link directly back to those strategic anchors and the pieces of each one of those strategic anchors. And then these are done twice a year so that we can keep tabs on what's working, what's not working, what do we need to reevaluate as we move through at the department level. And then we've got the elementary, middle school, and high school action cards. And what you can see there are the pieces of the action cards that each of our levels are working on this year. So elementary, and they're going to speak to this a little bit later, literacy, social, emotional learning, and student engagement. Middle school, on track academically, student engagement, clarity of direction. High school, relationships with adults, ninth grade success, and student engagement. On paper, what it looks like is each of the buildings on the right-hand side have these action cards that list out, here's what we're going to do. Here's how we're going to get there. Here's who is going to be responsible for it, and here's the timeline of it. And so again, pulling from the operational plan, the building principals and their leadership teams are working on these action cards. And so at the building level, people can speak to the action cards. At the principal and at the director level, they're speaking to the operational plan. And then at the board level, we're speaking to the strategic plan. And again, here's how it all fits together. It feeds into the right-hand side of this district vision card. And this is important because this is a piece that we said, we're going to take this year and try to figure out what should the first version of this district vision card look like? Because up until now, minus a strategic plan, we haven't had a consolidated way to say, how are we doing? What are we doing well at? What do we need to refocus resources at? What exactly is going well and what's not going so well? And this is where we are right now. So you'll see on the left-hand side, we've got those three areas. Based on the desired daily experiences, what do we define as success with students, success with staff, and success with families? Then exactly what are we going to track? And you'll see that in that second column from the left, that the first few pieces are related directly to the world's best workforce. How are we measuring on track for graduation? The achievement gap, attendance, read well by third grade, student engagement. And then you'll see things like mental health, student participation. Those are things more at our district level that are important to us to understand how well are we doing? And then we also know that we want to be measuring our staff satisfaction. And how can we do that through staff attendance? Why are staff gone? And the highly trained staff, which is another piece of world's best workforce. And then finally, one of the biggest things that came out of the strategic planning, at least in this first round, was this idea of are we keeping families engaged, particularly families that have historically been untapped? And then that leads you to the larger middle column, which here's how we intend to measure these things, at least through this first round. And how we came to this as a team was trying, has been trying to find things that we know, at least in the short term, are sustainable measurements. So if we're going to measure it this year, is it something we anticipate we can measure it next year? And the year after, and the year after. It doesn't mean that we might not go back through and say, this really isn't giving us the information that we wanted to tell us how well we're doing or not doing. But it's the starting spot of that. And it's things that we know we can start collecting this year. And then where we're at with it is just when those reports are going to be available. And so for the most part, we're going to be able to fill out this card by the end of this school year, if not into the first part of summer. The only thing that's probably going to come in a little bit later is going to be the MCA scores. But as we've all talked, and I think you won't get any argument from the administrative team, we're not quite sure how much we want to put credence in MCA scores, if any, as part of how well are we doing. So this becomes our first version of our, of our action card and what we want to measure as part of the strategic plan. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to our first group, which is our elementary principals, because I've asked the principals to give you a little more in-depth understanding of what's going on behind these action cards at the different levels.
So we have Kyle Latch from Kennedy, Matt Esterby from McCullough, and Paul Baker from Pinecrest.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much for this opportunity to talk about the incredible work that our teachers and other educators are doing throughout the district. And I want to reiterate a couple of things that Bob just touched on, just to show that at the operational level that it is impactful. And so the desired daily experiences, our leadership team sat down and went through what do students want? What are the families, you know, what do they value? And what does the staff need? And that all influenced our, our action cards. The strategic plan, it really does impact our thinking. So as we problem solve and as we're working through, whether it's with our literacy committee or our leadership teams, like these words matter. These things help us filter through what it is that we're, where we're aiming. Also, that, that three-year operational plan, particularly, you know, what came from that is our, our daily operational plan. And as we sat down with our leadership teams, we know that our elementary literacy program needs to be robust. The one thing that we need to do really, really well is keep kids safe and teach them to read at the, at the elementary level. And as, as we look at the vision of what elementary means, read well by third grade is right up there in the achievement gap. And as we created our action cards, you'll, you'll see that those are the areas that we focused in on. And so that literacy piece is huge. One of the components of that PD work that we did this year was curriculum alignment. What that means is we take our ELA standards, our English Language Arts standards, and we prioritize those. So our group of teachers by grade level sit down and they go through all the standards. And they figure out which ones are they going to prioritize? And what that means to prioritize them means that they are going to have in-depth conversations about exactly what those learning targets look like on a day-to-day basis. And how are they going to assess how students are doing? And so that creates a really consistent experience between our three buildings. So as an elementary program, as they transition into the middle school, the middle school staff can anticipate what are the strengths of kids coming in. As we think about our program in K4, the second-grade teachers know with better predictability what our first-grade students are able to do and what they can't do yet. And they can pick that learning up right away at the beginning of the year. This also provides focus for what our staff and our teachers are doing and their planning conversations from week to week, day-to-day, week-to-week PLCs, and as they create those learning targets and learning goals. And so those of us that, that did some school tours, you saw some of those learning targets in the classrooms and that alignment taking place. Say the last thing that it probably really tightens up for something that, that we've needed over, over the time that we've recognized is that classroom work and then our support services, such as special ed, the, the resource teachers to the PSAs, Title I teachers to Title I aides, and then also our EL services. Just kind of brings all that together. And Paul's going to talk about some of those specific whole group instructional strategies.
Thanks, Matt. And so as Matt was describing, one of the first steps was really to talk about how, what is it that we're really prioritizing that are teaching around? And then so we moved into then how? How does that take place? How does it, what does it look like in action at an elementary classroom? And so we've, we've been focusing heavily on that whole group instruction and really feel the importance of direct modeling being a core component to that. And so we've adopted a protocol around what we call an interactive read aloud. And that interactive read aloud is feeding right back to the, that standard that we're all focusing on. And in that process, teachers then are modeling the thinking that goes along with reading. Reading can be such an abstract thing for students to be learning. So it's important that they can kind of have a picture into our brains. Here's what we're doing as a reader. So that instruction will often include phrases like, as a reader, here's what I'm thinking. Or as a reader, I'm really wondering, why did the author include this in this text? And so that component is really then something that feeds into the whole group experience then into a small group where kids are then practicing. And Kyle's going to tell you a little bit more of how are we organizing that practice?
Thank you. So our small group instruction is that time in the day where each teacher can work directly with our students on that core instruction and coach them and support them and reinforce the things that we're trying to elicit from them to be better readers. It can be on the spot and really reinforcing and giving that positive feedback back to kids or feedback on how to make it better. And breaking the class down into those smaller groups allows that more targeted instruction, like we were just talking about with the book conversation. You can have a wide range of needs. And breaking them down allows all of those groups to be met where they are and still progress even within that individual classroom. That ongoing and timely feedback is a critical element of our small group instruction. Another piece of that small group instruction is regular word study work. The vast majority of our students, when we say that, it's mostly phonics for the vast majority of elementary kids. And so last year, at the end of last school year, we did some professional development and continued that through this school year to bring greater clarity and alignment within our word study practices and especially very heavy in phonics. We identified district assessments that we think would be useful across the system, like Matt said, to be more aligned as a district-wide elementary. And then to name and be more clear on some of the high-leverage instructional practices around phonics and word study. Having those assessments and those practices allowed us to be more precise to looking at individual kid needs. And then we can make those instructional decisions. And what practices should this group of kids need versus this one? And still have that growth. So we're giving them the mechanics and those specific skills to develop them. But the critical piece of this is also to always have in our mind, we are wanting to develop critical readers that are seeking meaning and making sense out of text, whatever that is that they're reading. So we might be getting into the mechanics of that and helping them become readers, especially when you think about a kindergartner. We need to be very explicit with that. But we want them to build that it's not just about that specific skill in manipulating words. It's about making sense of the overall picture is our, our goal on the forefront throughout that. Switching gears a little bit, our second goal, like Matt said, developing readers. Another critical area in elementary is that safety, wellness, and that mental health piece of that. And so something that we have used to make that a little bit more consistent and having more of a defined scope and sequence was us identifying over the last couple of years of using Second Step as a core resource so that we can have a more defined process of what does that look like in the beginning of kindergarten and grow that all the way through fourth grade. So then when we send them to the middle school and they do PBIS in the Raider Way, it's more cohesive. And we have some lessons that allow us to teach them how to be assertive, how to show compassion, how to deal with anxious feelings that we might have, how to deal with anger management. Sometimes it might be, when you think of your kindergartners or little ones, sometimes just that sharing piece when we're doing creative play. All of a sudden, I didn't want him to take that away, or I wanted that piece. It's working through that and having that in a developmental way. Or another big one, we're in the problem-solving stage of the year, is working through like playground issues. It's actively teaching that. And what it looks like in second grade is a little bit different than our fourth graders, but it's building through that. So we have common pathways, social workers, principals, and then classroom teacher problem solving. So we're all having those eyes together and obviously partnering with families on that. If we have issues come up, it's certainly not perfect, but we can have those conversations with families and partner with them on some of the strategies we're doing to support them at school as well. And Matt is going to talk a little bit more about those school-wide practices as well.
Sure, thank you. So imagine the 50, 60, 70 people or, you know, 120, 150 at the other levels of people working with kids and interacting with them on a day-to-day basis. And teachers and staff usually interact with kids a little bit of the way that they were parented. And so if you've ever imagined being at the grocery store or out in public, and sometimes you wonder, like, whoa, they're, they're kind of strict. You might say from another parent or you, oh, I would probably address that with my kid a little sooner. When we're in a building, everybody comes with a different background of their experiences. And so school-wide behavior expectations just levels that playing field for all of us to have a common language, common expectations. In particular, at our building, you know, we're focused in on that personal responsibility, respect, integrity, demonstrating safety, and then having that empathy. And I want to give a shout out to a few people here that were really instrumental. I just looked at the, one of the documents that we put together. It's 40 pages long of these expectations and how we're going to address these things. And Kate Adams, social worker, Laura DeWitt, our BCBA. And then this year, kind of carrying this work through, Amy Ferguson, has just been instrumental on, on making sure that we have common lessons, common language, and that our students have a predictable experience. I've got three boys of my own. Sometimes when Erica and I aren't aligned, they might go to her for an answer. And if I give them an answer they don't like or vice versa. And this really takes that element out of it. So kids know from teacher to teacher and grade level to grade level, hey, these are the expectations. Everybody's got them.
And then tying it together, the, the last area that we've really focused on is really around student engagement. So we kind of take, what is it that we're teaching? How are we teaching it? What are the, what's the experience that students are having in the social, emotional side? And then what does that active learning look like? And so this year, really bringing to focus through our five-D model that we're using for our evaluation and observation process, really honing in on that student engagement piece and district-wide. It's really been neat to be able to have consistent conversations at our level, but also across the district of here's what active learning looks like. Here's what engaged students are looking like. And then thinking through what are the actions that teachers are taking to create those conditions? There are really five areas in the student engagement domain of student talk, ownership of learning, opportunity and support for participation and meaning-making, and quality of questioning. And ironically enough, they often overlap very strongly with our literacy instruction. Just going back to that interactive read aloud, a really strong component of it is what kind of questions are we asking students as well during that process? Ties right back to our rubric that we're using for observations. What does it look like for students to be interacting with their learning? It's not just student-teacher kind of relationship, but we want kids to be collaborating and thinking critically together. And so it's really been really meaningful this year as these things start to align for us and really the purpose has been very strong. So any questions about kind of what we've been working on at the elementary level this year?
I'm thinking.
And we can come back to it if you want. You can bring up.
I just, you know, I'll close with, it's been amazing for us to have that big arrow, you know, from the strategic plan to the operational plan on the day-to-day basis. It really does provide clarity for us. And so it's been awesome having that. Thank you.
And next, we'll bring up Steve Kovach from the middle school to talk about the same type of thing with their action card.
I don't have any friends with me. Scott was going to come sit with me, but he's around here. Thanks, man. So we, you know, the middle school, listening to the elementary guys, we, you know, our students transition to us from the elementary school and have to adjust to the grading. And I think that's, that's why that top one you'll see is that they're on track academically. And we started off with students earning passing grades in all their classes and using that as a measurement, but knowing that that's not the end-all, be-all. It is really an indication of where our teacher is in the work that they've put in with content area standards work over the last two or three years and also in their work in formative and summative assessments. So I know that, you know, parents will see that in the grading decisions that we've made in terms of how teachers run their grading systems and how much of the grade is based on formative, formative data and what is on those summative, those big tests at the end. So that really helps, helps our teachers dive in to more, not just looking at where they are grade-wise, but using that as an entry point to really dig deeper into, okay, if we have students that are not, not doing well or not passing, what are the things that we put in place in terms of B and C? So, you know, we did create the after-school program just recently, just started in February at the same time that the Special Education Department has their recovery services, excuse me, to, to make sure that there's that, those extra pieces of time for students that are not, not doing well to have that extra chunks of learning, along with work that we still really need to dive into in terms of MTSS and our Pyramids of Interventions and what we're doing for students throughout the days and weeks and months. So that's kind of that, that first piece of keeping students on, academically on track. And just looking at my notes, sorry. Okay. It does lead into when we're having those conversations around curriculum, around those academic standards and those assessments. It does lead pretty naturally into that number two, into that student engagement. And I know Paul, Paul read off those five components of this, of that part of that student engagement domain. And it's interesting to, for us to be able to get into classrooms and observe. And what we're, what we're targeting is how often are we observing those five key areas in that engagement domain? And then also looking at that, and we still have yet to dive into that data a little bit more in terms of where are the areas that maybe were a little slimmer in terms of engagement? And, and using that to direct our staff development and learning that teachers need to do or discussions that they need to have. So I think it does naturally feed into that engagement because of the idea is that if students are engaged, they'll do, obviously do better in their content area courses. Another big area that we're, we're working on continually is, is that clarity of communication and our direction as a, as a building. And that's, you know, tapping into those stakeholders, the staff, our Hastings Middle School community. We are doing either monthly or bi-monthly and actually recently it's been maybe a little bit more, but that communication newsletter to families to make sure that they're, you know, understanding the things that we're, that we're doing or working on. We have a weekly or bi-weekly Raider app that goes out to the staff to make sure that we're all kind of on the same page. Each quarter, and we have yet to, we're just going to be doing our second quarter survey. We do survey staff just to, to make sure that they give us the feedback that we need as an administrative team in terms of the clarity of, of our direction, where we're going and where we are in terms of those action cards. And then just continually focusing on the effective ways that we communicate with students and families. And I know that as we're working through this middle-level review process, we will be looking to do more connections with, with, with families, with the community, and making sure that we are, are giving people a voice in what we're doing and giving us feedback. The other things that you don't see in here that we, that are always happening, that we don't necessarily have an action card on, that's part of these three is, and I know that Matt mentioned a little bit, the PBIS and the Raider Way. And some of the foundational things that we have in place, our counselors working hard, doing lessons for our advisory, you know, our advisory is a pretty core practice that we have at the middle school. We have lessons that, character lessons for students and we do those each week on Wednesdays. It's another time during that advisory that we are just communicating things through the building. And we're actually looking forward to, we're starting to increase more our PBIS. We've always, it's always been there, but we really have focused heavily on, on making sure that, that students are getting those Raider recognition tickets to reinforce the positive behaviors that, that we are looking for on a daily basis. And students really have reacted positively to that and they, you know, they can put their tickets in and have a drawing and win different prizes. And it could be riding around in the police car or having a lunch with their friends and just some, some fun things like that, just to reinforce those. I did see on the elementary thing and just wanted to make a note also, our, our counselors are also doing groups and are just purchased the Second Step curriculum also. So, so whereas it is not a necessarily an action card, we are, we are focusing on that mental health and that supporting students and meeting them where they're at. And that's what I, that's all I have for right now. Do you have any questions?
Lisa?
Thank you, Brian. This is a, this is less a question and more of an expectation for the mid to late summer. And I saw it on the elementary card and it's not here, but I know it's embedded in here, which is successful students, which is addressing achievement gaps. And I would, and I just would hope and I have the expectation that when we're talking about it and it's not straight-up MCA scores, I completely understand reservations that may be held about that. But I, but I think that piece about, especially when we talked about both untapped families and then who's being well-served and having the daily experience that we want them to have and who have we not quite captured. So I would hope to see when we get to that data piece, to be able to hear a little bit about that. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you, Steve. Appreciate it. All right. As the high school teams coming up, I want to point out that tomorrow is February 24th and it is Principal Johnson's last day. So congratulations once again, Mike.
Well, thank you. Thank you.
And sitting next to him, we have Scott Dorn, who will be taking over as the interim principal. And then we have Chris Hughesby, of course, who is the third part of the awesome team here tonight for our high school presentation.
Thanks. We're excited to be here and thank you for your support over the number of years. It is really fun to see the strategic plan come together. And so when we're working on action cards and what are the things that we can do that pull what we do well in Hastings and what is it that our students need now and coming out of COVID, we really feel like we're hitting it out of the park with this action card. So it's just really fun to see this come together. So we'll, Scott is going to talk about our ninth grade success, where we're coming from, the on-track to graduation and the achievement gap and why we think that is the lever to pull, that if we nail that, we've nailed a lot of things. Chris will talk about our advisory coming from mental health and participation in activities and athletics. And student engagement, the principals before me have talked about that, where we are using the 5D plus model. And each of our teachers have goals that they can choose from, but they also have a student engagement goal. So our role as principals going into the classrooms is when we leave that classroom, we're measuring student achievement. It's a known rubric. People know what we're looking for and we're giving immediate feedback to the teachers within that day. And the other part that you see there is we have the AVID program at the high school, which our school board has supported implementation of that. And AVID stands for advancement via individual determination. We have about 112 students who are part of this program with an elective to try, how do we get students from college-ready to college-reality? But when we implement this, this is school-wide. So it's the, it's the strategies, it's the engagement, it's the techniques, it's the fun things we do, it's thinking about writing and inquiry. The reason why I bring that up under student engagement is that there's a big difference when we rate engagement for teachers that are avid-trained and those who haven't been. So for those people that are living the avid lifestyle, the students are more engaged, they're having a lot more fun. So again, we appreciate your support with AVID. So Scott, take it away.
Well, thanks. I got really lucky joining the district in July as assistant principal, primarily working with ninth and 10th grade. So joining a team that was already really high-functioning identified last year is where kind of the biggest bang for the buck. Where do we need to see some improvement? And we talked a little bit, or Steve talked a little bit about that tough transition from, you know, elementary to middle school. And what we found out is that transition to high school is probably the toughest transition. High stakes. You're thinking about credits and graduation, on-track to graduate, how can we get there? And what we found out is that our ninth graders have struggled in the past, you know, from our boys having more fails than girls, some of those underserved populations that we're talking about. So this team was formed and we started thinking about what can we do to identify needs of our freshmen and really tackle that, address that right away. So this team got together and right away, again, like I said, it was very high-functioning. They had a direction and it was almost as if they had permission to give themselves permission to try anything. And so we, again, Mike said the avid piece, very strong avid presence, presence in this ninth grade team. So let's start talking about some of those avid strategies that we can do ninth grade-wide, which is now kind of trickling into building-wide. Focus notes, some of our, oh, I wrote it down here, binders, real organizational tools, things like that. So as that started, we started to realize that, all right, we're seeing a little bit of bang for the buck, a little bit of improvement. What else can we do? And Mike just mentioned a minute ago, talking about, you know, those levers to pull. Well, this ninth grade team actually created a lever. And we talk about this Raider Connect days. I'm not sure if you're real familiar with those, but again, that permission to let's do things differently. So today was our third attempt, our third offering for students today and tomorrow. It's a two-day sequence where we slow down. The entire building slows down, classes turn into a kind of a block system. Teachers can teach differently, dive deeper, especially those freshman teachers, let's do things differently. They're able to recognize what those freshmen need and turn that table. Here's what we're going to do today. The second day of that two-day sequence, at the end of the day, freshmen are required to be in the building and work on anything. They go to their advisory, which, which Chris will talk about here in a minute, fantastic program. Center themselves, decide where they need to focus the last hour and a half of the day, work with any and all teachers, connect with counselors, administrators, really take that time for what they need to be successful. So this is again, our third attempt. We have two more sequences, one in March and one in May, so five during this year. And we're already seeing a massive reduction in failures. We're looking at a 20% reduction already in our freshmen. So we talk about on-track to graduate, when freshmen can feel that success in ninth grade. And again, these kids have not had an uninterrupted year of schooling since sixth grade, if you think about that. So coming into school, not really knowing how to do high school, had to kind of teach them how to do pep fest and find out where the media center is. Really, you think, kids know this stuff? They don't. They haven't. They're struggling. So to have this freshman team come together and just offer, I mean, hearts on their sleeve, these kids are feeling very loved. So the improvement we're seeing in grades, attendance, engagement, decrease in behaviors, rough part of the beginning of the year, and now we're starting to see kind of that, kids are getting into a groove. It's nice. So we're going to continue these and really we're talking about goals for next year, we're just going to continue. Pivot is we need to make some changes, but this is, again, I can't say enough for this freshman team. And it's not just teachers, we're talking support staff and counselors and just about everybody's, can I be part of it? Oh, yeah. About 20 to 30 people out of a 60 staff member building that are all part of this. So I'm really, really impressed and proud to be part of it.
Thanks, Scott. All right. So I'm just going to tackle some of those advisory things that we implemented this year. So one of the big things that we have noticed over the last couple of years is that disengagement, right? And that lack of connectedness with kiddos and teachers and adult staff members. And so when we look at advisory, we started kind of surveying other schools and things like that. And so we came up with a huge plan last spring, started implementing a planning committee for advisory and a structure committee for advisory. And so it's really kind of encompassed our whole school. And every day for, since September 7th, we have been meeting with our advisories for 15 minutes each day. So if you can imagine 15 minutes of each day with the same teacher, the same students in a less-than-stressful environment, I would say. So that's the biggest thing that the teachers and the kiddos kind of feel like. It's time where you kind of take that deep breath, you're able to let your shoulder blades relax and just enjoy some of those skills, those conversations that we all need as far as that engagement piece goes. The other big thing with advisory, I would say, is that mentorship. So if you can imagine ninth through 12th graders, there's about 18 to 22 kiddos per advisory. And most recently, I suppose I could mention is like the reservation, registration. So when we go through registration, you can imagine what a senior might say about a ninth, eighth, ninth grade class or a 10th grade class, or just sharing out some of those stories that they've learned and experienced through our walls at Hastings High School. So being a mentor and having those four years with that same group, we are really looking forward to. If you mentioned advisory to one of our Hastings High School staff members, they would, if they could, they'd do a cartwheel. So they're really enjoying that time with the kiddos and we are super excited to see it continue to grow and what it's going to look like in a couple of years. Thank you.
Any questions?
So since we heard from elementary, middle school, and really anybody can answer this too, it, since, okay, so last year, 2020 dumpster fire, right? We can all kind of agree to that. Have we seen, like, the kiddos coming in? Do you see them rebounding back? Do you see that progress? And is there anything that we can do to, to assist you in that progress?
That's a great question.
Normally, just straight numbers, we're normally at about students not getting credit, four and a half percent on a typical year. That jumped up to about 11% in COVID and now we're under 7%. So the things that we're doing as a school and the things that our students are doing, I'm glad students are here, everybody's working hard. The other part of it, as I think you're right, Stephanie, we're just kind of used to getting back in the swing of things. So that consistency, normalcy, getting back to what are the norms, what are we doing with school, I think are important. I would also say too, under secondary credit recovery options, as a district, we've received great support from Bob and Jen and Rachel on how can we use the resources that the government is providing for us in a way that we can help students get back on track? So when we think about 11, 12% not getting, there's hundreds of students who did not get credit. In the last year between after-school credit makeup through Todd Levis at the ALC, summer school, the success study hall this fall using Esser dollars, Jen, is that correct? 563 credits were made up in that year. 563 credits were made up in that year. And students are standing a little taller, shoulders a little firmer. Those things that I think with integrity that we did to help students, and that's exactly where it went, really has paid off.
And again, Stephanie, just to answer a little bit more of the question, just again, that permission to try things differently has been really, really refreshing. Well, thank you.
So moving back then to this, thank you building principals for giving us some insight into what those action cards look like. And I know it takes a while to get through all those different levels, but I think it's important for everyone to see that, that there is a progression that when someone just sees that strategic planning one pager, there's a lot of stuff that's going on behind the scenes that makes up what those bigger rocks are on that piece. So what happens next? We're in the spot where we're starting to collect data here this next month. So we're in testing season now and that's going to continue through, through the end of the school year. These action cards will be turned into some goal reflections. So a couple of the groups mentioned, what will we be doing next year? Some of these goals are going to stay exactly the same. We're going to carry them through because they are those big levers and we think that there's more to get out of them. Our operational plan reflections and we'll start making adjustments to that as well as the vision card reflections and making adjustments to that. And then before we get out of the school year, we'll already start making our goals for next year. So the plan on this cycle for us is that we can get staff and leadership teams and administration back together so that before staff leave for the summer, they have an idea of what is it that we're going to be focusing on the next year? That allows us to really dig in during the summer and plan, what are the supports that need to be put into place so that we can help provide the opportunities and give the freedom for staff to do what they need. But we need to be able to have those frameworks in place and so we can hit the ground running in the fall. So now with that, I'd open it up for questions, but that is, that is our strategic plan as it sits now in February.
That does take some time, but it's a great update. I want to thank all the administrators for the time you've spent, have been spending on this. Those recovery rates are outstanding. I'm glad to hear our kids are getting, you know, getting that back now, that's huge because they did take quite a hit these last couple of years and to get that back is tremendous. One quick note, the whole high school U of M thing, was that on purpose? I thought that was probably on purpose and just as a side note, I did want to let you know, because we always need a little levity, it just happened that my daughter today had an intense day with the block scheduling. 1357, class, 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 class. Tomorrow she's got 246, that would be study hall, study hall choir. Thanks for that, appreciate it. No, seriously, thanks guys, appreciate it. Okay, let's move on to building construction fund project update, which probably means that Cam's going to get on the hot seat at some point. Cam's been waiting so patiently. Okay, Jen?
Yep, thank you. So just a quick reminder that the building construction fund accounts for the money that the district received for the voter approved bonds to update district facilities. So the money in this account is specifically for updating facilities and projects related to that. So there have been a few updates since last month. In that top section of the completed projects, the high school athletic field parking lot is now complete and there was approximately $32,000 left in that budget. So that goes towards other projects eventually. And then in the in process section, we had three projects move up there. So it's the middle school privacy improvements, the high school privacy improvements, and the door and glass improvements. So the two bids were approved last month, the high school privacy and the middle school privacy. And then in design, we'll have, three of those projects have bids on the agenda for tonight to be approved. And those are the, partially it's the high school deferred maintenance. There's the lighting project that's part of that project and then the middle school track and then the high school parking lot improvements, phase three. That's all I have, any questions?
Any questions for Jen on this? Okay, Jen, stay tuned because we'll get to change orders later, but just stay tuned, thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to student enrollment.
Okay, so just a quick update on that. From last month, January, we had 4,055 students, we went up two students. So that's good that our enrollment is staying really stable right now. From last year, we are down 45 students, which was partially anticipated. Our total is still in line with the estimate that was used for the 2122 revised budget.
Always good to be on budget, so I appreciate that, thank you so much. Any questions for Jen on student enrollment? Okay, we'll move to community engagement committee then.
Okay, so we met last month, kind of a smaller meeting. We narrowed down our topics for our tangible projects. So we're going to work together with the middle school to see what we can identify to help with programs there. So we're going to invite, looking to invite the PTA counselors, administrators to come share ideas with us there. We're also looking to develop a list for the high school student volunteers to help in the community. Put it available on our website and maybe starting to include middle schoolers. Trent Hansen does a really good job with the athletics, but just if there's more people that want to be able to volunteer and then so that the community knows who is willing to. And we're also still working on our key communicator on networks. So if anybody has any ideas that would be a key communicator to get communications out to the district, contact Gary Gore. And then we did not meet yesterday due to conflicts of scheduling, so we'll meet next month.
All right, thank you for that update, Becky, appreciate it. Finance committee, updates from you, please?
Yeah, thank you, Brian.
Yes.
We met early in February, it was mostly, in fact, it was a completely educational meeting. No action items are coming forth from finance for this time. We did get information from Jen and Bob that the Hastings district has reviewed their financial municipal advisor and is making a recommendation to, not a recommendation, is changing to Ellers based on the cost and the value of their services that are being provided. And my understanding is that Ellers will be able to join us with some representatives at our next finance committee meeting. So I'm excited about that opportunity to meet them. We received an ESER fund briefing, which I would encourage, if you see in the minutes here, there's a link. It's on the district website, just a really detailed report about all of the various fund, ESER fund dollars that have come in, what they've, in great detail, what they've been expended for and what we anticipate them being expended for. And I just, I just really have to highlight the high level of professionalism that we see in the distribution and the monitoring and the execution of those dollars. And it's available on the district website and encourage anybody to get on there and look if you have any questions about where those funds are going, which ones have been expended and when the different deadlines are. So I thought that was very informational. We did a review of the building bonds to this point and then reviewed the budget process and the timeline, did a legislative update because at that point, the walls, Flanagan budget and both the House and Senate identified budget priorities were out. So it was an update within that committee, since we don't have a legislative action committee at this time. And then we established that our next meeting is going to be, we settled on March, right? This got added in, it was a doodle poll following up and there were no action items coming forward out of the committee.
All right, thank you, Lisa. That brings us to the policy committee meeting that was last held, an update there from you, Stephanie?
Thank you, Brian. So bear with me, we did a lot of work. So we met on February 8th at the district office. We started with an overview of what the policy committee is. So we went through the mission statement, just kind of clarifying what the board member's role is on the committee. And then we went over, you know, what we've done over the last two years, kind of where we're at presently and what our goal is for the future. I do want to put out kudos to Jessica. I think she will be a fantastic asset with her attention to detail. And Lisa, I'm really looking forward to working with the two of you on this team. So we did, we already talked about policy 213 with the school board committees, as you saw previously, is that the recommended change was to strike that facilities, facility committee. But then we thought a little bit about it and we said, you know what, maybe we just need to change that verbiage and take a look at eliminating specifying the committees because every time we change the committees, which is a few times a year, we have to bring this policy forward again. So maybe we just have an attachment that is referenced in that, in that policy. And then we took a look at, I believe it was, Mike, you had brought up policy 499, the COVID-19 vaccination emergency temporary standard. And we said we would bring it to committee, so appreciate that. And basically, you know, it's not active right now and will remain inactive as long as there is a stay on the decision by the Supreme Court. So our recommendation was that we just kind of leave it sit. If it does come into play, we'll revisit it at that time. But to just have it in place and then we can also bring it to the board. You know, once there is an actual decision and if it gets removed, we will then remove it in its entirety. Policy 616 with the school district system accountability. So this, the 600 series, as we dove into it a little bit more, they're all tied together. So we, we thought, okay, you know, yes, there are some wording changes, you know, the difference between world's best workforce versus curriculum advisory committee. But maybe we just need to give all of these to Rachel, to which she graciously accepted. So that is kind of like the next series of policies that we're tackling. And then we'll provide updates because it will be a lengthy process, we anticipate, because there is so much to it. But we'll provide the updates to the board as we work through those. And then another thing too, that was brought up, I believe it was at the January meeting, feels like ages ago, is the MSBA policy audit. So the cost is $1,200 to request MSBA to come in and do an audit of all of our policies. Talking through this as a committee, we thought, you know, we're comfortable with where we're currently at. And if we spend $1,200, what are they going to tell us? They're more than likely going to tell us what we already know. So maybe what we do is reassess, you know, we're going to continue following those benchmarks and reassessing as we go along and together we'll keep each other accountable to make sure that we are making progress on our policies. But that maybe we need to take a look at, once we're at a good standing point and really getting into this flow, is to then bring MSBA in, say, you know, four or five years down the road to do an audit. Okay, this is, these are the policies that we have in place, where are we at? So that was our recommendation for, for that particular inquiry. So policy 403, this is a duplicate policy to 540. Again, shout out to Jessica for bringing that to our attention. And Kathy Moen is going to review these policies and bring recommendations to the policy committee. And then, it just keeps going. The policy services newsletter, so we received a newsletter from MSBA with a summary of policy changes. And at the end of this meeting, you'll see just a slew of policies. So what ended up happening are the policies, there were, they don't need to go to a first or second read because it is, we're comfortable with the changes and recommend adoption with, you know, it's changing, it's updating the statutes. And so if you took a look at the policies, you would see like at the very bottom with the references, it's just, there was a change in the law, so we just have to change that reference. Policy 206, so this is public participation in school board meetings, complaints about persons at school board meetings and data privacy considerations. So just for everybody's situational awareness, a bill was introduced recently and is expected to pass. I don't know if that has changed at all, no, okay. And what, what this changes for us is us asking for addresses or names of citizens who wish to speak to the board and moving that to an option, so it's no longer recommended. So what do we do when we have our listening sessions or public comment? Is how do we know when people, when it's their turn to speak? So we're throwing out, like whatever ideas you guys have, you know, is it, do they draw a number? Do we have, you know, do we have some sort of option out there to say, okay, if you are number 101, please come forward and, and speak to us? So that is, that is a consideration. So no action at this point. We're going to discuss it a little bit more at March's policy meeting and hopefully come forward with a more solidified recommendation. The policy 604, which is the inclusive education program. So Rachel is, again, it's a 600 series policy, so she's going to be looking at that one. And then at closing, we decided that yes, 600 series is the next series of policies that we want to review. And then we decided that we're going to meet every month, the first Tuesday of each month at 5:00 PM at the district office. So pending your questions, that's all I have.
Any questions for Stephanie on policy? Well, you guys are taking on a lot. I noticed that you've managed to get rid of the every two weeks thing after I'm off the committee, that's fine. It's all right. Jessica, thank you so much for picking up on some of those things and your attention to detail. It's great, it's awesome. All right, we're moving to action items. First up is the consent agenda, which needs a motion and a second before we can get into any discussion about it. So do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have motion and a second, any discussion? Mike, you had a couple of things possibly, I know you mentioned earlier.
Yeah, so one was about the, the construction, the billing for the, like removing the unused data outlets and repainting accent walls right below the.
Is that, is that, is that one of the particular change order numbers? Because what we can do is we can make a motion to pull out certain ones?
Sure, I can.
And then we can just talk about individually?
Absolutely, change order number four.
Change order number four, got it, okay.
203.5. 206. 210. 211. 504. 520. And 609, but I believe 609 was, was that on that?
Why does that sound familiar?
Oh, I mean on the list that Stephanie was just reading. And that's, that's what I have.
The policies that are on there are the ones that are from the MSBA list that had the quote unquote insignificant changes. So that's why they're on here is to get them up to speed with what MSBA recommended we do.
Okay, so is that the entire list was there as well?
That's why those are on the consent.
Okay.
Because typically the, we don't put policies on consent agenda, we put them on as a batch item. But these ones that are on consent this time are because those are those MSBA policies from the newsletter where MSBA said legislatively either a statute number has changed or I can't remember what the other, there was a list of different things, but they said you need to put these through as changes, that's why they're on there.
That I might, give me a minute, I might then retract a majority of them because it seems that they're not necessarily up for debate per se, because it's just minor, okay, give me one minute.
Yeah, and Mike, one thing that we can do, if you have any particular policies, you know, like this, this is, like Bob was saying, the minor changes, you know, bring it up to the policy committee and, and we can definitely take a look at it as deemed appropriate.
I'm going to give Mike a moment to review and while he's reviewing, was there anything else on the consent agenda that we need to discuss? Carrie?
I'd like to move to pull out the bills payable, I just have a couple of questions on some large items.
Bills payable. That is 8A4. 8 dot 4. Okay.
He made a motion, so now we need a second, right?
Well, I'm.
I'll second that.
Okay, that's right.
Oh, we, yeah.
You probably need to retract.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we just retract to approve the consent agenda as we work through the removal of certain things for individual discussion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, then, if anybody is opposed, please say aye. All right, with that, everybody's in favor of that, so we will pull out those particular items. Circling back to Director Tate's for 8 dot A dot 4, she made a motion to remove it from the consent agenda and Director Mom seconded it. Does anybody have any objection to that? Please say aye. I'm going in reverse because it moves a little bit faster. Okay. Being honest.
I'm what?
All right. Okay, so are there any other pieces within the consent agenda that we need to pull out and talk about individually? Director Reese?
Just 520 and 609.
That's what we're down to?
Yeah.
Do we have a second for 520 and 609 to be pulled out of the consent agenda?
Seconded.
Seconded on both 509 and 620. All those opposed? Aye?
Just for the 520 and 609, you just set them backwards.
I'm sorry, 520 and 609. No, that's why he's backing out. So based on that, what I'm looking at right now is 520, 609, and 8 dot A dot 4 are going to be pulled out. So that is a revised consent agenda. With those three items out, I make a motion that we now approve the amended consent agenda. Do I have a second?
So moved.
I have a second. All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Aye? No opposing. Consent agenda is passed. Just give us one second, please. We've got to get these new ones reordered into the I'm going to do the ones we just talked about now because they're fresh on Mike and Carrie's minds, so I'm going to get to those first. They're at the end of the, they're at the end of our individual actions, but as chair, I can switch it up. And so we're going to start with bills payable and talk about that. So Carrie, you've got the floor.
Yes, I would just like to know what the payment to ISD 917 is for in an amount over $300,000.
And I'll turn it over to Jen. She's got the specifics on that.
So we are a member district of intermediate 917, and the district is provided with low-instance special ed services and services for students with significant needs beyond what the district can provide. So then the district is billed for those services around January of each year for 90% of the annual estimated bill. And then a final billing for the remaining amount is received in July or August of each year.
Thank you. My other question is, we, there's a long list of colleges that we paid for the, in the monthly total was $79,100. I was just wondering if I could get some details around that.
So those payments are for awarded scholarships from the local scholarship program. The funds for that program are provided by local businesses, families, organizations, and the Hastings High School staff. And they're specifically for scholarships of Hastings High School students. Due to the restricted nature of the funds, they are accounted for in a separate bank account. So you'll see on that report that they're listed as scholarship. They're also recorded in a separate fund and a separate reserve account according to Ufar's guidelines. And then on the high school's website, there's actually a whole page dedicated to the specifics of that local scholarship program.
Thank you. Those are all my questions.
Okay, thank you, Carrie. That moves us to 520. Mike, you're up. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I keep forgetting where we are now. So we need to now vote on that item, which is 8 dot A dot 4. All those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Do we have to do a motion again?
You have to take it first.
Well, that's right, because we never took it out. All right, I'm sorry, I need a motion to approve 8 dot A dot.
It's all moved.
4. Second?
Second. The motion is to approve bills payable, right?
Correct.
Because it's rednumbered. Okay.
All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? The motion passes. Back in a groove now. All right, now we move to item 520. Director Reese, you're up.
And 520 is the surveys, and I guess it was just more of a question about why do we have an opt-out versus an opt-in? That's more of the question that I have regarding that.
That sounds like a Bob. So opting out is the typical way that you do survey work, particularly when it pertains to students. So the process that's set up is that we want to ensure that we have all the materials out to families and notifying families as far out as possible, typically no sooner than two weeks. We also want to have it on our website when those surveys are, so families are aware. And then you'll see as our student engagement surveys come out, if you haven't already, we've tried to post PDFs of those already, so parents can see them and make that choice to opt out if they don't want their kids into it. So it's just, that's the way that these are done. It's, it is an easier way for us to manage how many kids we want to make sure that, that parents don't want their students to partake in those surveys, because there's typically far more that do partake.
That was all I had. I just wanted the clarification on that. So, thank you.
Okay, that's great. Thank you, Mike. So we need a motion to approve 520.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes. That moves us to 609. Mike, you're back up.
On here, it looks like it was just minor changes about making efforts to accommodate students for religious things. Does anyone need to approve that? I'm hoping not, that it's, if somebody comes to you and says XYZ reason and it's religious based, that it's just almost unilaterally approved, you know?
That's absolutely what it is. That's why they changed it in that policy, is to make sure that it's clear that a student could come up and say, I have this religious reason not to be here, and they're not going to get any grief for taking advantage of that for themselves. That was all I had.
Thank you for the question, Mike. Okay, so let's go to a motion to approve 609.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. All right. I'm going to run back up to the top now. We're going to go to the Health and Safety Resolution.
All right.
And we have handouts. All right.
All right, and Becky's going to throw up a copy of this. There we go. So the reason I have handouts is, so for the public and those watching, what I did is I posted the version of a resolution that had some highlighting in it. And I've been getting information back from individual board members of areas that they've wanted to discuss tonight. So the way to do this and try to be as transparent as possible is, what you see up on the screen is the document that board members have in front of them right now. I thought it would be easier for board members to track this in front of you than watching the screen. So that's the only reason that I've got it set up this way. What my thought was for the public and what I explained to board members is Becky has up on the screen a live document, and I thought we would work through this from top to bottom, and we could make changes as we go through of each of the areas that individual board members wanted to talk about. And that way, when you got to the spot of taking a vote on this, what's on the screen is the live amended version. Does that make sense to everybody? Okay. So for those people who've had a chance to take a look at this, you'll notice that this version of the health and safety measures is quite a bit shorter than what we've been working with, thankfully. So the, anything that's not highlighted is something that people have had a chance to look at and did not provide any change to. So we'll drop down to the fourth whereas that is highlighted. What, this has been brought up, is that the question in blue, what happens if we move to an endemic stage? Does it automatically cease to exist? What I can say about this one is there are, there's at least one district I know of, for the same reason, that simply took this whereas out of the resolution altogether. So that would be an option. I guess I'd leave it up for a conversation at that point. Doesn't matter to me either way.
I guess that's why I'm not commenting. I'm open to either. I mean, let me, let's do this another way. Does anybody have any passionate feeling toward one way or the other? Let's start there and open the conversation with that. Carrie?
I think I like Bob's suggestion, that it would be simpler and more straightforward to simply remove it, just because then we're not having to watch, is this still a pandemic? Is it not type of stuff?
Yeah, I'd agree, especially if the CDC says endemic, but it takes the state a month or two to say that, so.
I agree.
Okay, with no objections, let's strike it.
Okay.
So let's keep it in our live version there.
So while there aren't any changes, what I do want to point out, that people want to talk about, what I do want to put out for the public, Becky, if you'll scroll back up, I just, sorry, down a little bit, a little bit more. I just want to get to the bottom of the whereas's. There you go. You'll see at that last whereas, the health and safety measures for the 2122 school year adopted by the school board on August 25th is hereby terminated by adopting this one. So our original resolution that we started would be gone. This is the resolution that would take its place in its entirety. So just to make sure that's clear for people. All right, moving to page two then. The next item that the board, people I wanted to discuss was this idea of the, I think it's the seventh bullet there, all persons highlighted except for pre-K programming are recommended to wear face masks when inside school buildings. So essentially, what we had started with was simply all persons are now recommended to wear face masks, not required. There was some conversation and differing opinions about except for pre-K programming. So I put it in there and highlighted it. So the conversation, or what you need to, as a board, come to some agreement on here, is do you want the pre-K students to have a different expectation, meaning they would still be required, than everybody else in the district?
I think if we're changing this, I think it needs to be all or nothing, in my opinion.
And that's administratively what we are thinking as well.
Yeah, I just, if I had to pick one grade to not mask, it would be the pre-K, because I think that they're still in, well, everyone's still in the learning phase, but more so than anyone else. So I would second what Becky said is all or nothing.
So my reservations about treating pre-K the same as our kindergarten through 12th grade is multiple fold. First of all, there's virtually no vaccination in that age group. There's probably a handful of five-year-old students. And I don't know that a handful is more than one or two, quite honestly. So that's a, that's a very small number. And that program group occurs at our senior center. And that programming group has demonstrated a perfectly high capacity to wear masks. So I, I do have some concerns about, about them moving to an unmasked situation when we're still at, at the community transmission rate that we're at.
I just, oh, sorry.
I was going to say, go ahead. Anyway, go ahead.
Just based off of Lisa's mention of the vaccination rates, this is the Sunday paper of the Pioneer Press, just last Sunday, not four days ago, but 11. Breakthrough cases, the majority in the state, there was, in a timeframe from early December to January, so about a month, 60%, 59% of the cases were through fully vaccinated. So I just don't like using that reference of the vaccinated and the younger.
Right. Cases is one component back to that. And you would expect as vaccination rates increase, that the number of cases in vaccinated people would increase. That's, that's just a base expectation. The severe illness, hospitalization, and death is the question at hand, that, that vaccination makes dramatic differences in. And so that's, that's just my perspective on that.
No, that's absolutely fair. Thanks for providing that, Lisa. Jessica, go ahead.
So I don't think that we should have stronger or stricter recommendations or requirements than the CDC and the Minnesota Department of Health, and they both recommend and use the words should and not must. So I think that we should eliminate the except-for-pre-K programming from the resolution.
I'm Carrie, but that's.
I'm sorry. It's not like I don't know that. I'm sorry.
It's okay. I guess I don't think that we should be masking pre-K students. I think one of the fundamentals of the, the reason that masking is supposedly works is because of proper mask-wearing, and that means not touching the masks. And I, I have 0% confidence in the two-to-four-year-olds that they can wear a mask properly without touching it. The other concern that I have is the World Health Organization has never recommended masking for this age because of potential negative impacts developmentally.
I will contribute. I have heard from some, so for those of you that reached out to me via email who are a part of that community, either educating them, or actually, it's predominantly educators of that group, I am aware that, you know, you've got your five-year-olds and there is a vaccination cohort, vaccinated cohort there along with the elementary schools. And I know that some of those numbers are comparable. I get that. And I know that a lot, a lot of our seniors are vaccinated. I also get that. So I just want to acknowledge that I did get the notes from all that and see all of that, and I appreciated the input from all of you. I wanted to throw that out there before we got to a vote.
And I'm sure, Brian, you also saw the input from the parent that is, had impacted experiences with having to withdraw because of lack of understanding about the COVID risks.
If there are no further comments on that, we have to determine what we're going to do with this piece. And I think the most effective way to do it is to go through each component. We're just going to have to vote on them as we go, just as we do, because I don't know how else to do it.
Well, with something like this, we could leave it.
I mean.
Yeah, you could. You could make a motion. You could do it as a motion and a vote.
I just think we're going to have to do this piece by piece. So what I'm going to do is when we get to each components, we're going to have to determine if we're not all in for sure. determine if we're not all in for sure, that we, we'll just vote on and, and move it along that way, and try to get to the redone end of this document. So I'm gonna, um, ask for a motion to, um, I don't know which way to do this, again, a motion to strike the except-for-pre-K programming and make it all persons. Um, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, so we're gonna take a vote now. All in favor of that, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Correct.
Aye.
All of those opposed?
Aye.
All right, um, did you get that recorded? Becky, six, one. Lisa? No, okay. All right, let's move, um, now to the next component, which is I believe all persons must wear face masks right on school, oh, that's right, we can't do anything about that.
Yep, the only thing that's there is, it's in blue. Um, the one idea was to, uh, to add, um, until no longer required, simply so that we wouldn't have to come back and revisit this if and when the CDC says you don't have to do it anymore.
And I changed my mind, um, on how to write it, to make it simpler. Um, sorry, so when writing on school buses, as long as required by federal order. Same concept, just simpler.
That was gonna be my suggestion, too.
Nope, I got you, that makes sense. So if we can get that down that way, um, that would be awesome.
Just to be annoyingly editorial in a public setting.
Sure.
Um, school buses while required.
Um, there was a question about masking and, um, our, our school health offices, I know there are varying, there are varying pers- perspectives on this one, however, the health offices in our buildings are a different beast in this whole thing. Um, and when we have students who are ill or are determined to be ill, those students in that health office would still be required, it would be the only place where they'd be required, until they get picked up from their parent, to wear a mask, um, inside of that location. Because, and here's why I wanna be clear about it, when a student gets ill and is, would be given a mask, it's not like they go back to class, right? They're in that confined space with everybody else. But this would be the one exception, um, to when a student would be expected to wear a mask.
Yes, Steph?
Um, my comment with this is, uh, well, I have two. Uh, so one, the first question that I have is, are there, in the health, uh, health office, is there a potential that more than one student who is sick could be in that health office? Okay. So can we change it to masking unless exempt? For those, those kiddos that are exempt from wearing masking?
Any other, oh, Lisa, go ahead.
Yeah, my only question to that, I get, I totally get where you're going with that, is, do we have an exemption? If we terminate the previous resolution, is there exemption definition?
There is, there, there would be. We can leave the exemption, I mean, there's a, there are really two exemptions to it. One is, um, the, um, I can't remember what's word, but it's the approval of, on a religious basis, or, um, a medical exemption.
Okay, so my question was even more simple than that, but I appreciate that clarification. I think that was good. If, that, was the definition of the exemption a component of the previous resolution? Or does it exist someplace else? If we strike the previous resolution, does that definition still exist? And if it doesn't, can we, um, bring it in to this document?
We could. Give me a second. I mean, if, and if you, actually, why don't we, if you want, you can take on the next one, which is the visitors' thing, 'cause I know that's gonna be a discussion, and I'll pull up the stuff for the exemption.
All right, why are you looking, why are you looking for that, Bob? We'll move on to the visitor piece, and we'll have conversations around that one while we're waiting, um, for you to get that language for that part. Just by the way, as a side note, all of these kids that have exemptions are obviously gonna have them the rest of the year anyway, it's not like they expire. So I'm just, just a side note, that they're already exempted for the rest of the year, I would assume. Um, okay, let's talk about the, uh, component with the visitors, um, in the building piece. Um, comments? Stephanie?
All right, um, I would like to leave it as it reads, where visitors are not allowed to join the students for lunch. So my biggest concern, and on August 25th, it was one of those decisions, it's like, okay, not necessarily a fan of the mask, but it's all about keeping the kids in, in class. So, um, if there are visitors, that's just another choke point that I'm afraid it might come in. Fortunately, numbers are going down, which is, is a positive sign. Um, but until, and, and maybe what we do is we take a look at this, this particular language again in maybe a month or two, and revisit it.
Yes, absolutely, Becky.
So I like that, I agree with the visitors. I'm indifferent a little bit, um, I, but I, I do feel, since we're just starting this process, taking the masks off, let's wait and just kinda see, I think, caution on the side of error. But also, like what we did for, what did we do? Or like the end, I guess, we could put in there something about when it's no longer a pandemic, but I guess we could just revisit it again, too, whatever verbiage you wanna use.
That's a great thing, we can always revisit these pieces. Uh, Mike?
Yeah, I would agree. I, I don't, I'm not a fan of making visitors, um, not a fan of the mask, but I, I do agree that if, if, if we at least say that we're gonna address it in a, a month or so, I, I could, I could get behind that.
That is a great thing, is we can always circle back, um, down the road, as, as we, as we learn more, as we see how things go. Um, Lisa, did you have something else?
Yeah, I would also support leaving this statement about visitors in for the time being, uh, to Becky's point, as we take a layer of mitigation, if that's the direction this is going, if we take a layer of mitigation off, I, I want us to do that in a measured and thoughtful way, and not be introducing additional risks. We also already identify that volunteers that are there for academic support or operational purposes are allowed. It's not a, it's not a hard close to the building, so we can still have, have that. And I think visitors not being allowed to join students for lunch for the time being is a, is an appropriate, um, mitigation strategy.
Uh, you're Carrie.
Thank you.
I'm kidding, I was just messing with you that time, go ahead.
Um, yeah, I'm, I'm really excited to see that we're moving towards having visitor, or not visitors, but, um, volunteers allowed back in the building. I think that, um, that's a very positive step forward for, um, for the community. Um, and I'm, I'm fine with holding off on the, the lunch piece for now, I just wanna make sure that we do have some sort of goalpost that we're looking at. So reviewing in a month, I, I agree with.
You go, Jessica?
And I was just gonna say that I agree to keep it in there for at least thirty days until we see what this no masking situation is gonna create.
That's fair, then it stays. Everybody's in agreement. Let's, uh, are we good, Bob, to move back to?
Yeah, we can go back up. Becky, would you go to the top left, your, uh, I was going to the Hastings homepage? Can you pull up the, the homepage? And go to about us and learning in person? We click on that?
She's just, just slow Wi-Fi on.
And then, uh, go to mask exemption form, please, number four. So I think we could, we could put, uh, in back, if you, um, thinking back to what's in front of you, um, we could just qualify that statement with this exemption request, because it's got everything laid out in it, and that could be the happy medium for now with the, with the health office.
Okay.
Um, so Becky, will you go back to the draft? So unless exempt as per the ISD 200 mask exemption form?
Okay.
And again, this is just for the health offices, so I don't anticipate this being something that goes sideways on us very often.
Will they have them available then?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, they'll have them, oh, yeah.
We have thousands of masks. That is not an exaggeration.
And it's not, it's not an overstatement.
No.
Okay, the, um, last piece in yellow we've got is section two, um, that has to do with superintendent authorizations. Uh, comments on this piece, please? Oh, sorry, Mike?
Um, so I, I just, you know, based on some of the emails that have gone back and forth and from here and from, um, the public and stuff, too, was, is, one of the current issues was is we could always raise the masking, but we couldn't lower it without kinda going in there. So I just wanted to, is, is there a reason, or is that just more of a catch-all statement to be like, hey, if we didn't find anything? 'Cause in my opinion, I don't know that we necessarily need this section per se, because in, in my research, it's never just popped up on us. You know, it's, it's always been like more of a gradual, so it's not like tomorrow we're gonna have to worry that thirty-five people are all of a sudden sick. So it's more that I think that we do have the time to be able to schedule in the event something does come up. But I wanted to hear what other people might think about that.
Uh, let's start with Lisa, and then we'll go to Carrie next.
Okay, so I think we do need this in there, um, as was demonstrated when we attempted to have a meeting last week and we couldn't, um, because of scheduling conflicts to discuss this issue, and we couldn't meet for, you know, it ended up being ten days later. I don't think it's fair to say, oh, yeah, we can pull together and, um, and I do feel like any changes would have to be the full board, I don't think we can pull the full board together, three-day notice, um, with a delay in there. Um, I also don't think that the public representation that the superintendent could only raise restrictions was accurate. It's completely not accurate, and in fact, I think if we had seen, we'll probably see tomorrow, the Wolfson numbers fall below fifty, in which case there would have been an announcement that the high school didn't mask. And, and that would have come from a superintendent's decision. So that, that was an inaccurate, um, series of emails. And then the third point is I think Bob has demonstrated in his coordination with MDE and MDH, that he's been a very strong advocate for our schools to keep our kids in person, and has worked very well with the administration teams in each site to keep buildings functioning when there may have been pressure to move to a, to a more restrictive learning model. And I wanna, I want that advocate on our side, and I think if we don't have that advocate, if we've given away that choice, um, and we've given away his expertise, um, we're putting the district at greater risk, and we're giving those decisions to MDE and MDH, because we will not be in a position to make them in a timely manner.
I did, I did also wanna make something perfect, clear to the public, um, because we got a lot of notes, I mean, we all saw them. Why don't you guys do something? Why don't you guys do this when everybody else is doing it? It's kind of ironic, if Superintendent McDowell had been given the latitude that some of the other superintendents had in some of these districts, it would have been done by now. So it's an irony that we're having this conversation, because the reason that we're here on the twenty-third is 'cause this is when we could get together to do this, as opposed to them having had the latitude to be able to have done it earlier. So it, my point is the knife cuts both ways, and in this particular scenario, it does allow him to make moves for us, um, when we can't get together any faster to get it done. Go ahead, Becky.
I agree, Mike, um, what you said, but I think we need to err on the side of caution for now. Again, look at it in thirty days, how's our numbers doing, what's it looking like? I'm excited that our numbers are down. I'm excited that this could be the end of this pandemic, more than probably, besides teachers and superintendents, the healthcare system, we're excited. So I'm really excited about this, but I still wanna, on the air of caution. So look at it again in thirty days, let's take a peek. I just, for now, I'm excited that we're taking away masks, I'm excited for everybody, but let's just, I, I, relook at it again. I am not comfortable taking it away tonight.
Go ahead, Lisa, and then Carrie.
So this is just a process question. If, we've talked about a couple of things that we would revisit in thirty days, so I would anticipate, rather than writing it into this resolution, that we're, we would agenda this item in March?
Yep, that's exactly what we do, yep. March or April, depending on how things are looking.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Carrie.
I just wanted to make sure that it's clear, like, so that we don't get into this debate like we have, and why didn't you do something? Why didn't you do something? This allows either way, right?
That is correct.
There we go. That is what I wanna make sure.
This resolution allowed either way.
Well, so.
The criteria, and the criteria had not been met.
Yeah, I think it's important, there are two different things with, uh, I think it's hard, the, the old resolution was a complex resolution in how it was written. As a general statement for the resolution, the superintendent was able to make moves without the board's decision. However, there was some contingencies in there that stopped that, and two, the two contingencies were, um, with regard, both with regard to masking. The mask set points were what the board had decided in the fall were going to be the deciding factors for when a superintendent could move to a least restrictive environment. And then below that, there was actually a bullet point, there is a bullet point, that says the superintendent may move sooner to a more restrictive. So people's perspectives aren't necessarily wrong on it, it's just you have to, it's all in the details on what the board at the time wanted. We had a really long conversation at that meeting, and the board at the time was very clear on masking. It's gonna happen based on these set points. So yes, Bob, you can go do it, except for masking on these set points. So that's what's different here, is we don't have the set points.
Mike?
Well, I do like that we're not, 'cause our original conversation, what, a month to three, however long ago it was, um, uh, that we're not focusing on the distant learning. I like that, because, uh, I don't, I don't think that, that was the best use of anyone's time, you know, when it comes to that. But, um, technically, though, Lisa wouldn't have not gone back to unmasking, even if it dropped below fifty, 'cause it had to do it for two weeks straight before, just technicality, that's.
Yeah, and that's, I would believe, Mike, that you have spent more time with that resolution than I have, quite honestly. Because, because I spent time working on getting that resolution in place and understanding it, and then I turned it over to the administrators, and I let the team run with it.
Sure.
And I feel like they've been super successful. And since that time, I, I'm not living in the moments of that resolution. But there were those set points, and they're there for a reason. Um, we know different things now, and, and we've seen our team in action now, but I think we have to leave that team in place. And we have to give them the authority.
All right, um, I'm getting a lot of head nods on this one, so I don't think we need to vote on this piece, I think we're good to go. Um, which gets us through the entire thing. And the beautiful part about this is, you do not have to read the entire thing.
Out loud.
You, all you have to do is, you have to, um, just take us through us being able to approve it in a roll call vote, as amended, as written there, right now. Becky's got you.
I'm tired, my eyes are getting tired, so I'll read that one. Can I get a motion to approve the health, safety, and learning plan for 2021, 2022 with the indicated edits that have been made? So move.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote. We're gonna start with Mike.
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Carrie, right?
Yes, that's correct, and my vote is yes.
Becky Bysel, yes. Steph? Stephanie?
Yes.
And Brian Davis?
Yes.
All right, just so, just for clarity points, um, we've got Carrie Gore here, we already have a, a draft message set, um, so that, um, she can put that out to families, 'cause we'll put this into play, um, starting tomorrow. So there'll be a message that goes out momentarily. this into play starting tomorrow. So there'll be a message that goes out momentarily notifying families of the changes for our resolution.
All right. Thank you for that conversation, guys, and taking your time to go through it. I know it's been a long night. We got a couple more things to do, but I really appreciate it. Thank you. Okay. So let's get to AIPAC resolution of concurrence.
And so for that, I'll bring up Rachel and Gabe Moreno. All right, we're gonna bring Gabe up. And Gabe, I'll have you introduce your guest to the board.
That's pretty snazzy. Well, hello. Thank you very much, Gabe Moreno. I, I'm here tonight as the Native American cultural liaison. That's one of the roles I have within our district. With me tonight is our American Indian Parent Advisory Committee Chairperson, Michelle Corneliusson.
Hello.
Who's a student at, at our middle school here, who was a student at our middle school here. So, yeah, so it's my pleasure to work with our American Indian students to support and meet their needs as well as to partner with our parent advisory committee in drafting and developing our American Indian education plan each fall. From that, we then have a, as we have, have and hold our meetings, we have a vote of concurrence that occurs in February. And we did that on February 8th in which the, it was a unanimous vote amongst the attending members to vote for concurrence. And I'd like to, I'd like to share then, I'd like to introduce Michelle to share just a couple pieces of information and the concurrence itself. So thank you, Michelle, for being here.
Hi. So our board, or I should say our parent advisory committee is parents of Native American students or guardians, aunts, uncles. So the statute comes into play that if a school district, there are Tetermore American Indian students enrolled and each American, sorry, and each American Indian school must establish an American Indian Education Parent Advisory Committee. So we've had, oh, let's see, my son's in sixth grade. So this committee started when he was in kindergarten. So going on seven years now. MDE identified 98 American Indian students, which made us eligible to participate in the American Indian Education Program, which is important to our community. And then as a parent advisory committee, we give recommendations to the school board district through Gabriel. And then we meet monthly, I should say. So we just wanted to let you know as the parent advisory committee that we did vote that yes, Hasting School District is meeting the needs of our Native American students.
That's awesome.
And just as a point of order, the, the whereas and the therefore be it resolved is the form provided by Minnesota Department of Education. So I believe, I'm not sure, Bob, what we would need from the board. I know we do ultimately need signatures from some folks, but I'm not sure what that order of operations is, please.
Yep. So we're gonna, we do, we're going to need to have the board take a vote on approving this. So we can do it the same way that we did before with the resolution where you don't have to read the whole whereas, but you'll need a motion to approve the resolution of concurrent, yep, the AIPAC, as presented.
Can I get a motion to approve the AIPAC resolution as presented?
Second.
All right. Stephanie Maum?
Yes.
Becky Bysel, yes. Carrie Tate?
Yes.
Lisa Hadine?
Yes.
Jessica Dressley? Mike Reese?
Yes.
And Brian Davis?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, guys. Appreciate it. Thanks for your time. Appreciate it. And thanks for your patience as well. We are on joint facility maintenance purchase.
All right. So we have, you'll see, and some people have had some questions, but we have a joint facility maintenance with the building across from the district office. And we can answer some questions if there's questions about that. But essentially what, what it boils down to is in 2001, we entered into this and there was a purchase price. And an agreement of that was to, at the end of the, the lease, we could purchase 45% of that building from the city. And we've hit that spot where we can now purchase 45% of that building, which we currently use already. And again, this is the building right across from the district office. If at some point in time that the city were to put the building up for sale, we would then be able to regain the value of that 45% if the building were to get sold. So our recommendation is that the board approve the purchase buyout of this lease for $1 and we maintain our 45% of that building.
You want $1?
I don't. The city's gonna want it.
I need a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. That brings us to storage garage project.
Yeah. So we have a storage building and we do have Sal Bagley here tonight from Wold who can speak to this if we need to. But essentially, the long and short of this is as part of our bond projects, one of the approved projects is a storage facility slash garage that we've decided is gonna go on the middle school land in between the middle school and the track. And originally, when we looked at this project, the scope of the project, as you'll see there, was around $290,000. However, due to a variety of reasons, that project is now touching $500,000 to $600,000, so around $550,000. And it's a project we need. The, the saving grace in this, as you've heard over time, as we've brought bids to the board, is that we have time and time again been under our budgets. And so we have contingency dollars to net this out where it's not, we're still within our overall project. So again, if there are questions on how all that fits together, Sal is here and can explain how all that works in detail. If you would like her to come up and do that.
Let's open the floor for questions. Does anybody have any? Well, I guess you get to keep sitting right where you are.
All right.
Well, then I need a motion.
No, absolutely.
Absolutely. Just know that now we have a number in our head. So, so I would advise the arrow not go up.
So what is, what we're asking the board is to basically approve the amended project to be an estimated $500,000 to $550,000 is what we're asking the board to approve tonight.
So I need a motion for that.
So moved. Second.
All those in, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Water tower lettering. This is an interesting one. Lay it on us, Bob.
All right. So as everybody is probably aware, the water tower by the high school currently has Home of the Raiders painted on it, stenciled on it. And the city will be doing a giant refurbishing project of that water tower this summer. A couple of things came into play. One, we're not really sure when or how or who paid for the original Home of the Raiders. We can't find how that happened. But the other piece that came into play is the city has adopted a new graphic. And that new graphic, in order to become clear, has to be sized larger than the current one, which means there is no more room for Home of the Raiders to live underneath the graphic as it does now. So what that kicks into gear, as you can imagine, is they can't do it as a single graphic now. So now it's two different graphics. So what would happen is the city, if you can imagine, the city's graphic would live here and then Home of the Raiders would live at the 90 degree to that facing the building. However, there's a cost. And so just like this last one, this is kind of an oddball thing. And I didn't want the board to be looking through numbers down the road and going, wait a minute, we didn't even talk about putting Home of the Raiders on, what's this about? So I thought I would just bring it to you and have you vote on it. So you knew that when you see in the, in the documents, $3,500 that's being paid for Home of the Raiders being painted on a water tower, this is why. Because we didn't want to lose Home of the Raiders on the water tower.
So let's take a motion in a second, then any discussion we're gonna have. So is there a motion to approve the $3,500?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Okay. Any discussion, any questions? I don't really either, but I do want to make a statement. I am really disappointed the city can't pick up $3,500 stinking dollars to put that on there and instead put it on us. I said it. I'm disappointed.
I'll second that, Brian.
Thank you, Mike. I appreciate that. I really, I'm just flat out disappointed. It's sad. So that being said, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, sorry. Motion passes. That brings us to the legislative funding, which has worked its way back around that we need to approve. So I need a motion for legislative funding piece that Lisa presented earlier.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Oh.
Oh, sorry.
No, the only thing I was gonna say is that I, I shared the draft letter from MSBA with Becky. And so there'll be some edits to work on dates and some, you know, corrections and spacing and stuff like that. But then I, it'll come for Brian's signature. It'll come from the chair.
Sounds good. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Great. Okay, let's move. We've already done these other pieces because we, I kind of skipped around. Future meeting dates? Yes. I am. I'm done. We're not done yet after we close. So here are our future dates. It looks like, oh my God, I gotta blow this up. Policy committees, looks like they're meeting on the first, finance on the eighth, and then school board work sessions on the ninth. And the rest of the schedule is available on our school district website for people to take a look at and come check us out if you wish to. Couple of things, I'm sorry, go ahead, Bob.
Just one thing on future dates, you're gonna probably see me put out a message to you about the March 9th work session day. I'm gonna be asking for a special meeting, which will be a one topic meeting that has to do with our flex benefits program that in January, we were notified that our flex benefits provider was no longer going to be. And so Kathy and Jen have been scrambling to figure out, along with many other districts, what's this gonna look like? But I think it's prudent for us to have a board vote on that as we have to make that change. So it'll just be a one item board approval special, special meeting on the ninth prior to us getting going with our work session.
Can you make sure, just make sure you communicate out to us ahead of time what's going on with that, where we're at?
Absolutely. I just wanted you to have it on here now since we're going through.
That's my voice. Okay, just a couple of things before we close. One thing, I know the public had been asking a lot of questions around a piece that was presented by Director Reese, having to do with a resolution quite some time ago now. It feels like forever ago. I just want to let you know, the public know that resolution was submitted in its entirety. And it came back from SBA saying they felt it was totally appropriate. And they referred us going forward to anything having to do with our own attorneys. So I'm closing the loop on that. There's one other thing that I want to put out there for the public. I, first of all, a lot of you sent notes. They either had to do with mask or had to do with the book thing. And I tried to get back to as many as I could, but we all have day jobs. So I didn't get back to everybody. I apologize for that. In the future, I'm probably gonna split heavy issues like that with the vice chair. So we'll both be writing back to ensure everybody gets covered. So I do apologize for that. One last thing, I know it's late, but I have to say this. I'm also getting emails from people that are admonishing myself and others for not getting, not getting into catfights all the time. Now, I'm gonna say this, I'm gonna say it very loud and very pridefully. I pride myself as being the chair of this board of trying to find a way to bring us together as a group. I am not gonna get into fights because somebody either wants to be entertained or they think it's gonna be that way. Or anything else along those lines, it's not gonna happen. I'm gonna try to get along with people. I'm gonna do my darndest to do it. And if somebody's got a problem with that, then we can sit down, we can have coffee and we can bait it as long as you'd like. But the idea that we can't have a civil debate is ridiculous. We can have civil debate. I have already stated for the people who say, well, you guys gotta disagree sometime, we are gonna disagree. The last board disagreed. A couple of weeks ago, there was a vote. Mike and I voted with, we were the two and the other were the five. I voted with Mike already once. We have to get outside of this idea that's an us against them. And we have to get outside this idea. We will work as a unit. We will hold each other accountable for things we do wrong. We will do that. But this whole idea that we can't find a way to work cohesively or that we had to be in fights all the time is ridiculous. And I find it embarrassing that people within the city think that there has to be a dogfight all the time. Because you know what happens? We need dogfights all the time. How's Washington DC doing right now? We have to be able to treat each other kindly. And I for one, I'm gonna make sure that I do my best to do it. Will I hold people accountable for their actions? Absolutely. But I'm gonna do it respectfully. And we are not gonna have fights, at least not on my part. I just wanted to make sure that was clear because I know this is all gonna be recorded on television. I want to make sure everybody hears it loud and clear. And with that, a motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We're adjourned.